Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session Agenda for this Monday, March 10, 2025. It's great to see such a full audience. Thank you for coming. We welcome all of you and look forward to chatting tonight. Welcome to those of you at home, visiting us from the comfort of your couch on Zoom. So again, we appreciate your attendance. So Madam Clerk, if you go ahead and I guess we start tonight with the Continuum of Care presentation. And for this, we'll have Michael Yoder and Cynthia Stewart with our Continuum of Care co-chairs. Welcome. And because we had to kind of come up here, wherever you can find a mic that works is wonderful for us. City Clerk is working on that.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you very much for this opportunity to talk with you tonight. My name is Cynthia Stewart. I'm one of two co-chairs of the Continuum of Care. Mike Yoder is the other co-chair, and he's going to do part of this discussion with us. We also have Devin Isaacson, who's with Pierce County Human Services Department and serving as a collaborative applicant to the COC. And she may be able to answer some technical questions if we can't. So we're really pleased to talk about the COC tonight because we're proud of the progress we're making. And we're revamping it. We're making a more functional group than it has been over the last decade. Let me see if I can figure out how to do this again. Is that a hit? Okay. Yeah. So what you will see in this data here is that homelessness is not diminishing at all in Pierce County. And the job of the COC is to work on reducing homelessness in the county and provide needed services to those who are unhoused. You can see from this data that because it's not declining and it's increasing, and this is a continuation of a trend over several years now, we have to do something. We have to do something different. And so our charge is to work with the community at large to develop and implement strategies to significantly reduce this number. The community as a whole can do more than any single government entity, and the COC is poised to engage the community in developing solutions. So the purpose of the COC is charged by HUD, federal HUD, and it is to... I can't read my... I'm sorry, I can't read the slide here. I have to go to another page. The charge is to promote a community-wide commitment, as I was mentioning, provide funding for efforts by private nonprofits and governments, promote access to and affect utilization of mainstream programs, and optimize self-sufficiency among individuals and families experiencing homelessness. In addition to that, the COC is charged with HUD to set local homeless response system policies, develop and implement standards for services and performance, provide planning oversight to support a shared goal of ending homelessness in the county, establish metrics for and monitor performance of the system, and ensure that it can meet the goal. And so that is what we're working towards now. So recent changes. Mike is going to pick it up from here, and then I'll talk a little bit more later.
Well, good evening, council members. I was wondering if at the beginning of this presentation, you noticed that we referred to this as the Greater Pierce County Continuum of Care. And if you who've been around for a while might have noticed that it used to be called the Tacoma-Lakewood Pierce County Continuum of Care. And we have officially renamed our Continuum of Care to the Greater Pierce County Continuum because our hope is that we will have broader jurisdictional and community participation in more of a unified response and unified participation in our continuum of care work. And the reason that it was the Lakewood and Tacoma and Pierce County Continuum of Care way back in the day when it was first founded decades ago is because those were the only jurisdictions in our county that had any kind of actual active participation in our homeless continuum. And we are expecting to have much broader participation going forward. So we have a new name, but it's not just a name in name only. It really does represent, you know, a new wider hope for countywide jurisdictional presentation or participation. And this charter and this new name officially took effect in January, just a little over a month ago. And it also isn't just a change of name, but it's literally a change of structure that we hope will also include much wider community participation. There's a... There used to be a Continuum of Care Board, and everybody that was a part of the Continuum of Care was on the board. But now there will be a wider level of general membership and then a governing board. There will be a smaller subset of the membership that will actually do that higher level kind of governance. And the work of the Continuum of Care is going to take place in the committee levels. Every member will be a part of a committee, and the governing board then will just be responsible for organizing the work that really happens at the committee level. So the governing board will just, as you see on the slide, assure that deadlines are met and actually decide which decisions coming up from the committee's work need to go to the full membership for some kind of review or oversight. So a wider participation, both with jurisdictions, a wider participation with membership throughout the community, and then a smaller governing board just to kind of keep things working and on track. That's our new charter, our new structure for the continuum of care here locally. So the governing board, that's going to be a key group because they're responsible for kind of that guiding function of the continuum of care. And in the new charter, and this charter, by the way, was developed with the help of technical assistance provided by HUD. So it's based upon a charter structure that's a national best practice for local continuums of care. We didn't just dream this all up, but it's really we're aligning our continuum of care with best practices. And so the governing board, that is a key part of our new charter, has five ex officio members that are selected by their represent their respective organizations. And you can see there on the list that the city of Lakewood, because of its historic role in the Tacoma-Lakewood Pierce County Continuum of Care, we're hoping by the new charter for Lakewood to continue to provide a member selected by the city of Lakewood to be a Lakewood city designee on the continuum of care governing board. There's also a seat pre-assigned for Pierce County, city of Tacoma, and then another seat that we hope will be filled by another jurisdiction from elsewhere in the county. Then the tribe will have a seat. The State Department of Children, Youth, and Families will have some kind of a designee as well. And then representatives of local funders and the school district superintendent. We've already made a presentation to all the local school district superintendents, and we believe that they will nominate someone to sit on the governing board of the COC. And that will be the kind of the slotted seats on the new governing board. There will then additionally, in addition to those pre-designated seats, be up to 18, doesn't have to be, but up to 18 additional seats that will represent community partners. And this is where the community at large will have a chance to serve on the governing board. And those seats from the community at large can be people that represent any one of these communities that you can see there. We can't necessarily fill them all, but we're looking for board members that will fit one or more of these categories so we can have as much community experience in helping us provide this oversight as a community to our homeless strategy. So people that have these various backgrounds will be very key for us to having that right representation on the governing board. A key to this, at the end, we have racial equity expertise, population-specific, those kinds of things. There will be a real stress for people with lived experience of homelessness to be taking key seats on this continuum of care governing board so that we really can have that kind of reality check with the work. And Cynthia, where am I handing it back to you? One more. Okay. So this is a few more of the seats. These are a few more of the population-specific representative qualifiers that we'll be looking for as our membership committee of the COC fills out the governing board with up to 18 seats. So we'll see how many people are willing to serve, what their backgrounds and experiences are. And we'll try to build out this most representative board that we can, looking at these, also these criteria of population-specific areas, veterans, healthcare, et cetera. As it says at the bottom, additional groups that have a standing mission of ending homelessness. Those are the groups we want to have an appropriate representative step forward and serve on the governing board. There's one more. Oops, sorry. Thank you. I've lost track. Yeah. So the key to getting the work done in this, the continuum of care under this new charter, this new expectation, is a general membership of people that serve on committees. And these are some of those committees where people will serve. If you are applying to be a member on the continuum of care board, this is a member at large, not the governing board, but the member at large, then you will be expected as a voting member of the COC to serve on one of these committees. And these are the committees that we have at this point. There will be additional committees that will be stood up for a period of time. And but these are some of the ones that we have now and that we'll be filling with the membership. So having a general membership category will allow us to hopefully recruit many more community members who can come and join us in serving our community through the continuum of care. Okay. Is that me or you?
You want me to take it from the other?
Go ahead. Yeah.
All right. So we are getting staff support from two MOUs that are signed with the county. One of them is a collaborative applicant. That is the staff that manages the grants. They do the application. They manage the grant in terms of performance and that kind of thing. They send reports to HUD, and then they support the governing board. The other one is the lead agency for the HIMIS system, the Homeless Management Information System. That is mandated by HUD, and the COC is responsible for that. And so the county is taking the lead on that. They will be essential in making sure the system is working well and making sure that client services are coordinated and the community is informed. So in addition, the next steps are that we want to increase and broaden the COC membership. We want to continue to get new members to join to represent community interests and be on those committees and help develop solutions. We are going to be doing outreach to other cities like you in Pierce County, encouraging them to participate. And we are going to begin the strategic plan. We started one in 2023. We overdue to do the 24 to 29 plan. But we will pick that up and update it and move it ahead. Now, the big question everybody's got on their mind right now is what do you do about federal funding? What if HUD cancels everything? What if they take away half of it? So forth. We don't know what's coming. We suspect that there are going to be reductions. So the COC is still obligated to have community solutions. So we will be working on how to address that if that terrible thing happens. So underway, we are starting a planning process, as I mentioned. And then concurrently, the county is updating its comprehensive plan in homelessness because it isn't 100% consistent right now with the new state plan and its requirements. So what we're going to have is two planning processes in conjunction with each other. And what we're going to hopefully end up with is something very consistent between the two documents. Even though they're serving different functions, they need to be consistent because we want all the other plans to be consistent with those. And so we will be asking for jurisdictional support for that and community engagement. So we really hope that you will get re-engaged with this process, make an appointment to the COC and the board. One of the first steps we have to do is a gap analysis that says, what do we need to have in this community that we don't have yet? We need to do that for the planning process. We need your engagement in conversations about solutions, and we need your engagement in community-wide planning process. I lost track of where I am here. Mike, where do you pick it up?
And we're going, yeah.
Okay. So another piece of context for this and what we're doing is that it's important to recognize that although HUD is providing a great deal of funding, it's limited also. And so the county is actually responsible for funding a lot of the work that we do. And so this is just a diagram or a matrix that shows of the things that are funded right now, what the HUD investment is, what the county investment is, and the total. And you can see that the county is investing more than the HUD right now. But... And we want to acknowledge that and recognize it. In addition, one of the things that we've been working on is improving our applications to HUD so that we get more funding. The 2024 applications included this list. You can see that there are a lot of renewal projects, and then there were some new ones that were proposed. Unfortunately, what got funded was most, but not all of the renewal projects and very little of, none of the new ones. And they're limited to the HIMIS system, permanent supportive housing, and rapid rehousing. So we have a lot of work to do to cover those other kinds of services. So it's also important to recognize that the work that we've been doing in the last year or so to improve the application and so forth has in fact resulted in additional funding. And we're hoping that as long as HUD can provide money, we will continue to get more. So this is just some data about that. It's important also, I think, to know that a lot of times we have compared ourselves to Snohomish County. And what is happening is they're getting a little bit more money, but we're catching up with them. So we're doing better than we have for a long time. So Mike is going to take it from here.
Yeah. I hope that last slide was really encouraging. Why in the world are we doing all this work to come up with a new charter and to reform our COC and broaden membership and look for a new way to do this work? Because to the extent that we have been able to initiate these changes to our charter and the way our COC functions in its effectiveness in this community, but also in its effectiveness in the eyes of HUD, that is attracting more funding to our community. HUD invests in communities where they have their act together, and we have not had our act together in the way our COC has functioned in the years up to now. So that's why we've done this work, working with the technical assistance in the last year to reform our COC and its charter and how it functions and how the community is involved and how wide that connection is so that we can be a more functional COC. First and foremost, to be more effective, to be more effective together as a community in addressing homelessness. It's always about that at the bottom line. But to be more effective at addressing homelessness, we need more resources to do that. And so having a COC that is realigned towards HUD's expectations makes it a more effective group, and it makes it more effective in HUD's eyes and attracts more funding. So that's why we're starting to see an uptick in HUD's investment in this community. And to Cynthia's point, we had a lot of new applications for funding that weren't accepted. But we expect in the future, as we continue to live into this new charter, that we're going to see more and more of that new, those new opportunities funded. But there already is an uptick in HUD's investment in this community and our general COC funding. And then a significant breakthrough has happened in recent months. You may have heard about it in the news. It's the Youth Homelessness Demonstration Project, YHDP, another acronym for us all to bat around. But this is a separate HUD-funded set of funds that we've applied for for eight years as Pierce County and been turned down seven times. This year, the eighth time, they said yes. And they said, we are believing that Pierce County is now ready for this investment. And so they have given us provisionally a $3.5 million award that we can use for, to address youth homelessness specifically, 18 to 24-year-olds. And there is a process underway right now. The Pierce County Youth Action Board has been very involved. It's a group of young people with lived experience of homelessness. They have been very involved in writing the application with strong support from Pierce County staff as our collaborative applicant. And they are in the middle now of coming to the next step. Is that on the next slide? Yes. So part one, to actually see this process through, get these funds released and being put to work in our community, is to create the coordinated community plan. That work is underway right now with the Youth Action Board, technical assistance, county staff, et cetera. They have to bring that plan back for HUD to approve. So their first step is, we see a need. We're willing to invest in your community to meet that need. We think $3.5 million would be a figure that could help you meet the need. But you come back with a plan for how you would spend that money, and then we can release it for that to start to happen. So we're in the middle of this project where we're creating the, I have nothing to do with, but we as a community. See the ownership? I just implied there. I said, we're creating a plan. We as the community, the Community of Care Board, but really our young people working specifically on this youth project, they are doing the work to create this coordinated community plan, which will be submitted and approved for HUD to release funds. And then we'll have actual money that we can send contracts out later this year, and we can actually start work this fall. And it is going to be transformational resources for this community. Three point, I mean HUD's total funding was 4.8 million. This is another 3.5 on top of that. If we do a good job and we have a good community plan and we meet the metrics and the expectations of that plan, this is money that will come in perpetuity. This isn't a one-time application. That this is money that we can expect to, it will be ours to lose. And we will not lose it because we're going to have a good plan. We're going to execute against that plan, and we're going to go a long way towards addressing youth homelessness in this community. And it will be an ongoing resource that we can count on. That's what can happen when we work to make the COC more effective. So really, that's kind of the end of this presentation. We are really hoping that we've made at least a little bit of a dent in your understanding of this strange amorphous group called the Continuum of Care. It's a community oversight board of a bunch of volunteer people with jurisdictional partners and community members at large that have a new mandate and a new charter, and I think some new energy to come together and say, we want to work together in a unified approach to solving homelessness in our community. And we really, really believe that having Lakewood fully involved is an essential part of moving our continuum of care forward and living into our new charter. So that is our request to you tonight, and we're certainly very happy. I'm not sure I'll be the one, but one or the other of us can answer questions that you might have about the COC or our request of you or anything else.
Well, thank you very much for the overview and the presentation. I think all of us have great interest in it. I'm going to ask a question, which I normally open it up first, but I want to ask this question of you because I spent an hour on the phone last week with Liza Burrell, who is with Uncommon Bridges. And she has asked us to participate in the unified and regional approach to homelessness, which is a Pierce County project. So my question is, how does this all relate? We don't have overlap.
We'll have Devin from the county. Yeah. You want to say something? Yeah. Let's Cynthia start, and then we'll see what Devin wants to say too.
So first of all, the Unified Regional Approach began with a concept that was in the Pierce County Comprehensive Plan in Homelessness.
Right.
And nothing really happened for quite a while. Then the COC started getting rejuvenated, and it could be serving that purpose at some point, but it isn't ready yet. So in the meantime, the county council signed a contract with the company that you've talked to. I forgot the name.
Uncommon Bridges, yeah.
So what they're trying to do is they're trying to investigate what vehicle would elected officials and the community find as most appropriate to be that Unified Regional Approach where it creates an umbrella for all this other stuff. We're not saying we're going to be it. We're not saying anybody has any expectations right now. But they're in a one-year process, putting this conversation together. And did you have anything you would add to that?
That would be helpful. I think all of us who are looking to do good work with the limited funds we have are trying to avoid having two umbrellas with the same organizations that seek funding to do good work, right? So I know Mr. Brandstetter went to a meeting, I think on Friday, that kickoff meeting. He may have some more insight, but that was my question. So just hopeful that with whatever participation, because I have limited staff folks that the city manager can direct, and we have a hard time being on more than one umbrella. Otherwise, there's a lot of rain.
Excellent question, Mayor. I mean, you could probably tell from our presentation that in some sense, the COC could be structured to be, to serve as a unified regional approach. And in many communities, it does, but that's not guaranteed in this community. But it could be. It is, we understand it to be HUD's intention for the COC to somewhat serve that role in the communities where they are, where a COC exists. But, you know, our COC hasn't necessarily been structured for maximum effectiveness. And so there was another process to look at what might be the best process for Pierce County, and we'll see what that is. But yes, one unified approach and the COC's connection to that in some way is the goal.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. I know there are other questions. Mr. Bokey, and then I believe Mr. Brandstetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation tonight. I do want to touch on this Youth Homeless Demonstration Project. And in my day job, I think I actually like talked about this to the council because we keep making that request, and we finally got it. So congratulations. But I'm trying to understand. But I'm trying to understand earlier, at the very beginning, you talked about bringing educators in or someone from a school district because they have McKenney Vento. And I and so though, so when you talk about Youth Homeless Demonstration Project, I'm trying to gather my thoughts here. McKenney Vento are kids that may or may not have parents, right? They they live in cars a lot of times. It's a very expansive definition of homelessness is my understanding from talking to folks. When you say Youth Homeless Demonstration Project, is it just like kids you find out on the on the street? Who no adult in their life, they are just, they are just out there tonight trying to make a go of it? And then I have some follow-up questions.
Yeah, that's a great question. So HUD's definition for the Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program is that they're unaccompanied. And for this particular YHDP award funding, it's going to serve 18 to 24. They changed the rules in this round, which HUD does as they see fit. And what unaccompanied means is it's up to 24, the age of 24, and no one in the household can be over that age. They can be pregnant, they can be parenting, they can be unaccompanied individuals, but they can't have someone in the household over that age.
Okay, so what what happens? I mean, God forbid, there's a kid you pick up or run into and they're 15.
So we do have some resources in our community for unaccompanied minors. We have the Coffee Oasis Shelter. We have also the CRC, which is run by Community Youth Services out of Thurston County. This particular funding will not be eligible to be used for unaccompanied minors. However, in our Coordinated Community Plan, we can build out some of those solutions for younger, for the younger portion of youth and young adults.
So then a question that is straight, is going to stray a little bit. When you find unaccompanied minors below the age of 18 and then the 18 to 24 group, do they come from the region or do they come from all over? Where where do these, where do they hail from?
So I don't have the data in front of me. I wish I did. I wish I had that kind of a memory where I could I could just give you all the statistics. But primarily, I know that youth and young adults who are experiencing homelessness are throughout Pierce County. In particular, you see McKinney Vento numbers for all 17 school districts. There's a lot of young folks, a lot of unaccompanied minors. They're not all with their families, with their parental guardians. So we see them throughout the county and they have the same struggles that an older adult would have when experiencing homelessness, which is resource deserts, lack of transportation, and really just not being connected to the resources that they need. Because for youth and young adults, there are less resources than there are for older populations.
So So kids who couch surf by high school, and I think, you know, I had kids in high school one time and you hear stories, right? That they moved out of their parents' house, they're really couch surfing. So they would, I guess, meet the McKenney Vento thing of being homeless. How do we prevent them from just eventually just ending up on the streets? Do these kids work their way through by using friends and whatnot or?
Yeah, so the HUD definition for YHGP is actually expanded and couch surfing is eligible. So they would not have to wait until they were meeting category one or four, which is literal or fleeing domestic violence or trafficking. So we would be able to serve those couch surfing youth. We know that serving youth and young adults is one main area to prevent chronicity of homelessness in older populations. So it is important that we catch it before it reaches that literal status.
Okay, so one more question if I may. So that we've also heard all these stories of foster youth that at 18, they're like, okay, the state, you're 18 now. Go forth and prosper. Has that, now that we all know about it, we've been told about it, we've talked about it 10,000 times all over the country. Has that been solved? Is there is there a way that these young people end up? Does the state do some kind of transition thing now where they're out of foster care into adulthood where they don't end up homeless?
So they do have some grants and some funding that are specifically for youth that are exiting systems of care, not just foster care. They call it systems of care and they give awards out to nonprofit providers that are providing those services. There's also voucher programs in our system. In Pierce County, the Pierce County Alliance is one of the main distributors of those vouchers for young folks that are aging out of care. But I would not say that the problem is solved.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Branstad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yet again, thank you for being here. You know, and in your your request of of us is that you're asking us to rejoin. And on your in your presentation, there was a slide and and the the offer was to rejoin as an ex officio member. What is ex officio? On the slide, it said, you know, an ex officio Lakewood member. And exactly, what does ex officio mean in the context of that request?
So ex officio is often mixed with non-voting. In this case, ex officio means it's an official appointed by the jurisdiction who will be a voting member on the board. It's not somebody elected by the members, it's somebody that you appoint. That makes them ex officio, but they will be former voting members.
Okay, and then it does, in the list where Lakewood is mentioned, it says there'll be five such members. But list six organizations.
There's, it says there'd be five members, but there's six listed here.
So is, I mean, is there?
I made a mistake.
Okay, well, it's not calculus, so I'm not worried about it to go and do that.
If all six of these jurisdictions appoint somebody, we're not sure if the tribe will. We're not sure if we'll get enough, you know, an appointment from one of the other cities besides Tacoma and Lakewood. Then there may only be five, you know, but there could, if everybody steps forward, there could be six, actually.
Okay, and and then one of your comments was is that of a of a role was to set homeless response system policies. Is that in that context, is that for internal policies of the continuum of care? Or is that policies at a county level? I mean, I guess I'm not quite sure exactly to this organization with its members. I certainly see they can set policies for themselves. But you're not necessarily sure that I see how you would set policies for like entities in the county broadly.
So just going back to the origin of the COC, HUD established this program with COCs. There's 400 COCs around the country. The intention was that they would be kind of like the Unified Regional Approach. They would set the policies and other jurisdictions would be compliant with that. In our county, the county has taken more of a lead role up to this point. So what I what we were describing is what HUD is expecting from us. And we still have not worked this out thoroughly across the board. But HUD is expecting there to be a place where policies are set for the entire homelessness response system. And until we are told otherwise, we are assuming that is part of our job. Now, that doesn't mean we do it in isolation. That's why we have jurisdictional representatives and community engagement.
And then you 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 showed us a slide that had some population-specific members we were looking for, and you had a group of categories of what they there were. And I was just wondering why, for instance, in Lakewood, a significant population, are they the Asian Pacific Islander group? And they don't seem to be listed. And then our our largest minority group are people with African Americans, and they don't seem to be included here, even though we hear from the African American community that they're seem to be more significantly affected by homelessness than than the norm in other groups. And so I was wondering why they're they're not included, whereas for instance, but it does it does include Hispanic and Latino folks and things going off there.
I I think that this is a kind of a summary list. It's not all inclusive. The point was to say we want a broad range of both groups that are overrepresented in the homeless population and groups that need to contribute to solutions. And I think that it doesn't rule out the Asia-Pacific American community. I think it is intended to be included there, and particularly in the part dealing with racial expertise. So I we do not intend to leave them out.
And then first, there are, I think, across the county and certainly in Lakewood, many residents who are looking for a role to help with homelessness. I think it's not a, it's it's not something that the people generally don't have empathy for. They just don't know what they can do. So is is membership, as you described, there being a large group of members that would include anybody who's willing to serve on one of the committees that you had. The process to apply to be a member, is that being developed or is that the firm?
It's it's live on the Continuum of Care website, on the county website right now. So there's a membership application and it's quite simple to to fill out. But just asks a few questions about your affiliations. And also, Councilmember, to your other point, a new committee that we're getting ready to stand up based upon comments just like yours is a is a community outreach type community, Community Education and Outreach Committee. So it could be a great place for people who just feel passionate about this. But maybe they aren't an expert in Veterans Affairs or they're not maybe a service provider, but they just want to help the community understand the needs and the opportunities. And they'll be a great place for them to serve in our new community engagement committee.
And then I, we we received in our packet for the council tonight, a slide, a PowerPoint presentation that looks like it may be, I'm not quite sure how current it was because it wasn't the one that you used for your
Right.
presentation and to include using the old name and 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 other things to be able to go and do that. But you've been operating for a number of years and have been you know, you had at least at least a 2023 and 2024 awards of funding to groups of of programs that are that are there that in terms of those there, what were the primary metrics that you were asking people, organizations that applied for funding and received funding to receive and report back to you?
Yeah, so HUD actually sets some of the criteria for the application and they help you to craft the application and those questions that providers actually respond to. And then the COC is actually the body that crafts the performance targets and the way the rubric for how folks are scored with their application. And so it's complicated, as is most things with the continuum of care, because HUD is involved and it is federal dollars. And so based upon that, providers who apply are then ranked by internally by the Continuum of Care Board. And then we send that ranking tool to HUD and HUD makes the final funding recommendation. So they don't necessarily have to follow what we submit, but they oftentimes do. Is that helpful at all?
Let me tell you what I think you said, okay? That that there, that 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 when funded providers provide some feedback about what has happened in that? And then there is based on how well they do, there's a ranking system?
There is a ranking for the project application and the priorities that have been set by the COC Board. It's not necessarily past performance of that particular project, although that can be a metric when the Performance Evaluation Committee puts those metrics together. That can be something that they evaluate a project application on.
And it looked like subsequent year of funding was primarily renewals, for the most part, to be able to go and do that. And that we're doing primary renewals in an environment of where things are getting worse. So are we not funding people to do the same things that aren't working in some cases?
Do you want to have a go or you want me to? So my first response is there's not enough resources for the need. There's not enough resources from HUD. There's not enough resources, generally speaking, across the state and nationally. I don't think it's about renewal applications not performing or doing the doing the things that they were contracted to do. I think it's that the need far exceeds the amount of dollars that we have available. And HUD makes those decisions because they don't like to see projects removed from the system entirely. Because that can be a traumatic thing to remove a project or decrease the amount of permanent housing that a system has that can have a pretty large impact. Anything you would add?
Okay, well, I would say that in your presentation, we've in Lakewood, where we've had discussions about homelessness and things to do that, that that there are multiple groups that are that are experiencing it in one extent or the other that we are as an entity with limited resources, as you are. We have, you know, really have some some empathy and some concerns around two particular groups, which are which are youth, which are tend to be a younger. We tend to talk about youth with a younger definition than than maybe the HUD definition. And you know, we're 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 more looking at that. And so we're certainly welcome to any effective use of resources that'll that'll help that and will help our schools and our school districts that serve Lakewood better deal with 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 that situation to keep young people in a in an environment of where that they're they're able to effectively learn to affect the rest of their lives. Okay, to be able to go and do that. And then and then we've been very important and have committed some dollars and where we're concerned with veterans homelessness. And I guess that I would venture to say that in the point in time count over the past couple of years, veterans have been the one subgroup that have actually done better than than the than the others that are going on. So 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 I certainly would want anything that we're doing to help veterans to fall in the category of some things that that Pierce County is doing right and 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 not want to not want to abandon. But on the 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 youth element, the demonstration project, how does HUD characterize a demonstration project? And in applying for that, did you have to? present to them some mechanism to continue it if it's successful?
Yeah. So very good question. So the youth homelessness demonstration program is actually a program that you do not have to continually apply for year after year, once you have applied once and you are awarded. So that's the demonstration portion of it, if you will. Now, if you don't utilize your funds and you don't turn in your coordinated community plan and you're not able to show continuous quality improvement, then you could be at risk of losing those dollars. Now, what's interesting, I'm going to make it a little bit more complicated, but after the first two years of the youth homelessness demonstration program, those funds then roll into the COC and they become part of the total pot of funds that the COC has, which I think there was a brief slide about that. So it increases our overall, overall pot of money that we have available from the federal government for homeless programs. So it's very important that we do it right in the first two years.
Oh, okay. I, I said the, the, the term demonstration was just
Sure.
The thing that I needed some, 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 some clarity on. Okay. Well, well, anyway, again, thank you for, for, for being here tonight and providing. And maybe one last question is your new charter is, is that available on your website as well?
Is it posted? Should be. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
That's our intention. To your point, council member, that there seems to be some success with veterans. I would say that's because we've had, you know, a, a national focus on ending veteran homelessness with some resources that have come behind that, including in our community. So I think it's a demonstration of what can happen when you have, you know, a focus with resources and strategies, you know, on one particular subpart of the population. And so we have moved the needle on veteran homelessness nationally and here. And I think we can do that now with youth because we now have the resources and a targeted focus on that subpopulation. And I would expect to see similar positive results. And the other, when I do community forums and people say, what is going on with homelessness? So I'll take my COC hat off and put on my nonprofit leader hat. And people say, we're spending all this money and it seems like things are only getting worse. So I just, that's one of the little mythbuster questions I'm always very excited to answer in community forums because it's true. Those things both are true in a way. We are spending more. Homelessness only seems to be getting worse. My answer to that is you don't want to know what homelessness would look like if we weren't having the success we were having underneath it. So yes, homelessness is going up, but the successful programs are also climbing underneath it. It's just that the need is so outstripping the resources. It dampens the effect of what's happening in the community. But we in the last 10 years have seen great strides in the number of people that have been case managed into permanent housing and successful, you know, people remaining housed after one and two years. Those numbers are all looking very good. If we just had more resources to do more of that, you'd actually probably get to the point where you could see visible homelessness reducing a little bit, but with the housing affordability crisis and all the other, you know, contributing factors in the adjacent systems. The homeless response system that's doing yeoman's work and is actually improving and receiving more positive outcomes is still being outstripped by the need. So it just, it can cause people to say, well, let's just stop it all because it's not working. It's working very well. We just need a little bit more resources and maybe a little bit more strategic realignment or rethinking to make what we have work even a little bit better. And then I think we could visibly see the impact, but trust me, there are impact. And I've seen the numbers of just the number of successes of people, you know, being, being served by our homeless system over the past decade. And then you see the numbers on top of it, of the massive increase in the past decade as well.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you again for coming. We appreciate it and we certainly want a coordinated effort to have greater impact for sure. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for your thoughtful questions and comments. And it, it shows us that you're really tuning in and we're really grateful for that. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thanks. Well, next we have a review of the fourth quarter, 2024 police statistics along with the 2024 annual police report. And for this, we have our chief of police, Mr. Patrick Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Each and every day citizens, the citizens of this city and visitors come into our city, not recognizing the things that are going on in the background, the things that our officers are doing to make sure that the city is safe and making sure that everything is happening the way that it's supposed to. This past year, our officers worked several hours a day, making sure that everything happened the way that it's supposed to in the city. In 2024, we were able to increase the numbers to our, of our officers to make sure that we were at maximum capacity for our city. Right now we have 102 sworn, seven limited commission and seven civilians and also two K nine. Throughout the year, we've gone through and took a look at our organizational chart, our policies and procedures to make sure that we're operating efficiently and effectively. And right now, today, our command staff is here and I'll ask them to stand. We have assistant chief, John Unfred, who manages most of the day-to-day operations as relates to the department. Professional standards is Jeremy Prater. Criminal investigations is is he here? Yeah. Andy Gilda House, he's not.
There he is.
Oh, he's hiding in the back. Andy Gilda House, specialty units. We have Chris Westby and our patrol. We have Pete Johnson, as well as our support services, we have Jeff Alwine. This year we had a few officers who retired and also a couple of who, a few who joined us. We wanted to welcome Eric Dear, Officer Cromes, Porter, Kennedy, and also Styler. And we had promoted Keith Zuliger and farewell to Ken Devaney, who retired and also Chris Bowles. This past year, we handled nearly 50,000 calls for service. Forty nine thousand eight hundred and ten. We were dispatched on 44,110 calls. Our average calls for service, our priority, for our priority calls were six point, were 4.6 minutes. And our other calls were handled in 8.7 minutes as far as response time. Our, our violent crime for the year, we had 1,643. We handled 828 cases in our investigative unit and we also had 3,324 property crimes. The cases cleared was 751. In there, we had cases cleared. We had special operations that made 33 arrests, 44 search warrants, 60 asset seizures and 51 guns seized. This past year, we also had our traffic unit out there. We have a traffic sergeant who, who is Sergeant Porsche. And we also have three additional officers assigned to that unit. That unit was responsible for 1,067 traffic collisions. They also issued 1,510 citations for the year. Our animal control consists of two officers. The two of them did exceptional job for the city. Actually, they serve three cities in Lakewood, Silicon and also DuPont. They handled 1,900 calls for service. They impounded 300, 203 dogs. And we also issued 512 infractions and three potentially dangerous dogs. Our property and evidence included 5,756 articles, 413 guns, 29,000 grams of narcotics and 42,941 dollars recovered. Our station officers handled 10,031 phone calls, 5,000, 5,400 walk-ins and they completed 257 reports. Our marine services unit, they were on the waters within the city. They issued 234 citations, 320 citations and warning for a total of 324 total. They did a number of vehicle inspections and also search warrants as they serve the community. We still have two K nine units. Kona should be retiring soon. We have Hawk and we also just brought one new dog onboard. Our behavior health contact team is still intact. We've made a couple of changes within the unit. They responded to 760 care response episodes. They also had 236 new admissions for behavioral health. Our CSRT, they handled 572 total code compliant complaints received. This year we had our, we've been expanding our drone unit. And our drone unit works throughout the city to make sure that we're there able to support our officers out in patrol. There have been a couple of times where they basically helped save a number of situations where they moved in and they were able to do searches for us. They were able to help us along the way with search and seizure and things of that nature. They responded to one crime scene investigation, one search and rescue, nine incidents managed and three police operations for a total of eight, eight oh three hours of operation. This year we handled several retail theft emphasis. We were highlighted by the International Association of Chiefs of Police for our efforts in retail theft and also our able, our ability to make arrests in those areas. We also do, did several holiday emphasis. At the end of this year, we started our business district car. We have two officers assigned directly to the business district so that they're able to provide additional support, work with the businesses and identify those who are committing crimes within, within the area. That program created 82 arrests and they also recovered over $10,000 worth of merchandise from, for those individual businesses. Throughout the year, professional, professional standards who keeps track of many of the items that we have within the organization. We had 91 pursuit, 91 pursuits this year, 121 uses of force, 2,059 arrests. And we were dispatched on 4,000, 44,110 dispatch calls for service. Below that you'll see the reasons for the pursuits and also the reasons for the use of force. The internal affairs findings, we had two investigations that accounted for seven allegations of misconduct. And we also had seven sustained complaints from that. One of the critical areas that we've been working on, that has been a little bit of struggle for the police department, has been eluding. You can see from the chart of the number of loot that occurred within the city. You can see the huge spike where the laws changed that allowed, that disallowed officers from pursuing individuals. And we've been working critically hard to get this back in alignment. But we've seen great success with the reduction, reduction in overall numbers from the start of that. One of the, one of the other areas that I wanted to highlight was the hours trained by our officers. We invest a lot of time and training in our officers to make sure that the entire, the entire department is getting all of the necessary training that they need. And also to make sure that our officers have all of the critical changes in the laws and that we stay on top of everything that we need to. One of the most important things that we can do as a department is to stay in touch with the community. To highlight our, our efforts is very critical in everything that we do in the community. Our community outreach has increased over the years. And one of the most important things that we do is our shop with an officer program. And this program where we work with Walmart to provide gifts, we take kids shopping for the holidays to make sure that those families in need that are identified by officers throughout the year and also in a, identified by the Clover School District have an opportunity to go out and shop where they might not ordinarily be able to do that. We also do our holiday meals, affectionately known as Moody's meals. So we provide those meals with the generous donations of Walmart and others to families in need and usually it's about 150 families who those meals are designed to help. This past year, we put on our citizens' police academy. We'll be doing the same this year and we're encouraging citizens to come out, take part in everything that we do related to our citizens' police academy so that we can get citizens through and make sure that everything is done the way that it should be. And our officers are staying connected with the community. One of the other great events that we do each year is our national night out to make sure that our officers are, are seen in a different light. They're going around to the various community organizations and everything that, that is going on that night to make sure that we're staying connected with the community. This year marked our 20th year. And we wanted to highlight the picture that was taken in 2005 and we went back and recreated that same photo this year, 20 years later in the same position and just showing the various changes within the department. Our officers have great success throughout the year and have worked exceptionally hard to bring about changes within the community, reduce crime and have an overall impact on crime. I'll briefly go over our numbers for our fourth quarter. And, and that's, this will show the significance and the impact that officers have had on our daily crime in the, in the city of Lakewood. Overall, our crimes, our, our calls for service decreased by 7.6% for 49,810 calls. That's down from last year about around the same time. And also it's kind of in line with how we've been operating within the city. The most important part is that our, our officers have been very proactive. Our overall arrests were up this year to 2,059 as compared to last year. It's a 10% increase in our overall arrest within the city. Most critically, if you'll notice our, where our felony arrests may be down 9%, our gross misdemeanors are up 45%. And that's just a representation of the changes in the law that brought, brought some of the felonies down to gross misdemeanors. a representation of the changes in the law that brought, brought some of the felonies down to gross misdemeanors. Our crimes against persons in this area, it, it shows our ag assaults being down fourteen point four percent. This is a tremendous success for the department because for many years, our, our ag assaults had been up, up and up, and to bring that down fourteen percent is, uh, is very good. Our homicides were down twenty percent. Our robberies were down twenty-seven percent, and our sex crimes were down fifteen, fifteen percent, and we had a total decrease of three point two percent reduction in our, our crimes against persons. Our property crime is where we saw our, our biggest drop in numbers. Uh, this was due to a change in technology, change in strategy, and also the approach of our officers in handling crime within the city. Our burglaries were down almost twenty percent. Our larcenies were up twelve point five percent, and that's primarily because of the arrests that we've been making within the city, the uh number of details that we've done in the city as well. But our, our biggest success falls within our motor vehicle theft, and we are recognized by the International Association of Police again, of Chiefs of Police again in that area. We show a sixty-seven percent uh reduction, and that's year over year. And uh the most important thing is that at the end of uh near the end of two thousand and twenty-three, we were, we were showing a forty percent increase in our stolen vehicles, and uh in two thousand and twenty-three, it came down, and then in two thousand and twenty-four, we're down again. And we ended the year with a sixty-seven percent decrease in our motor, motor vehicle theft. Stolen property was down twenty-six point three percent. Bandolism was down twenty-nine percent, and our weapons violations were down twenty-one percent for a total of twenty-five percent reduction in overall crime within the city as it relates to property crime. And this goes back to our pursuits and eludes. We spent a lot of time on training our officers as it relates to the changes in the law, making sure that we had very good policy as the laws change for pursuits so that our officers were making effective decisions and knowing when to actively end a pursuit as well as when they should go into pursuit, and our officers have done a great job. We had ninety pursuits this year, but that's also in line with bringing our eludes back down to where they need to be so that we're not having a critical problem within the city. And our, if, if you'll look, you'll see that our eludes were down fifty-three percent, which is a great, great uh reduction from our, our past as it relates to eludes in the city. Our shots fired were down to three hundred and seventy-six, which is a twenty percent reduction. So across the city, the officers are working exceptionally hard, and you're seeing the results of their hard work to make sure that crime is being reduced. And this one, once again, is our motor vehicle theft, and the graph on the right will show you the significant reduction in the year-over-year crime in reducing stolen vehicles. I think the, the word is out that uh not in Lakewood, and we want to make sure that we get this down as best we can. This represents nearly eight hundred less victims of crime. The one sticking point has been our collisions within the city. Uh, we show almost a ten percent or one percent increase in our, our uh collisions, and that continues as the weather changes and people continue to drive. But our traffic unit and our officers are making an incredible effort this year to reduce that as we continue to have more enforcement in critical areas of the city. This is a quick summary of our overall crime, showing um reductions in really critical areas of crime, and we're hoping to continue to show reductions in all areas of crime. Uh, in, in your packet, I included a copy of the chief's report that comes out every morning, and on that, that chief's report shows our daily crime. Our daily crime uh right now, you can see that we show uh a reduction in crime in all areas of crime, uh with our highest being uh seventy-six percent in reduction in motor vehicle theft and also a seventy-one percent uh reduction in sex crimes. And so those are critical areas that I think are incredibly important for the department and incredibly important for the city. Um, there's one thing that we, we did a, a little bit different this year, and I wanted to just discuss it real briefly. One of the things that we did is our officers are doing great work out there. Uh, we dedicated a full wall to represent our officers and also to represent some of the work that they're doing, honor them, and it's called our Wall of Honors. And um today, I've, uh, we have several officers here who performed exceptionally well. We, each, each quarter, we honor the officers of the quarter, supervisor of the quarter, civilian of the quarter, and we did so throughout two thousand and twenty-four. Today, I, I wanted to present uh awards to five individuals who were honored for um of the year performances and honoring their work, and I'll ask them to come down front. Uh, Sergeant Charles Porche. Sergeant Porche is being honored for Sergeant of the Year for the Lakewood Police Department. I'll ask Officer Jack Johnson. Jack Johnson is our rising star. He's a relatively new officer that has been performing exceptionally well and meeting all the challenges of the city, and uh he does an outstanding job for us on a daily basis. Our detective or investigator of the year, our detective of the year is Karen Latimer. If you're ever doing wrong in Lakewood and you find Karen Latimer's name assigned to your case, I suggest you leave. Officer of the Year is Josh Rep. Josh Rep works for us, uh does an incredible job for the city. He also, he's also our K nine officer and K nine, K nine trainer. You put him and Karen together, and you have a major problem. And the last one is our civilian of the year, or who represents our support services, and that's Savaya Pitts. Uh, she's unable to be here tonight. Uh, she had a, um, and a medical issue that she had to take care of, and so she's unable to be here, but she's very thankful, so I wanted to honor them uh and have them recognized and uh with the council if we could take a picture of you guys.
Want us to come on up?
Yes.
All right. Well, we're kind of underdressed tonight in the study session, but we'll come on up.
And so Mayor, Mayor, if you have any questions for me, just please let me know.
Say thanks to the family members too for coming, and thanks for bringing your parents in here to do great work for the city. So certainly, yes, thanks, Chief. I'll open up for questions. Uh, Councilmember Branstad here. Councilmember Laura Sella next.
Yeah, yes, Chief. Uh, I was wondering, you know, with respect to the Flock cameras. Are, are we completely rolled out with all the cameras we hope to eventually have, or I, as I was, there was a time when we had to do it in phases, and I wasn't sure whether we were completed yet.
So we're almost there as far as our Flock cameras are concerned, and it's not an issue with Flock. It's an issue with our state. We had gotten up most of our cameras, and then the state came in saying, hey, stop, we want uh an electric, electrical permit and this and that before they could continue. All of that has been put aside now and resolved. Flock has met all of their standards. Uh, most of our cameras are up and working. We did have a couple of accidents uh in the city, uh traffic collisions that knocked out a couple of them, but, but we should be up and running completely here very soon.
Okay, and, and I, I, I had the impression that the system becomes even more valuable as more jurisdictions uh do them. Uh, uh, and I know we were, regionally, we were in the forefront of implementing them, but are, are our results influencing any neighboring or nearby communities to follow our lead?
Absolutely. So Flock has been a game changer for us in terms of um in terms of resolving crime, conducting investigations, and also uh recovering stolen vehicles or vehicles moving within the city. Uh, our implementation of the Flock system has allowed other agencies, one, to see how, how the system works, and also, number two, it, it, they can see the effectiveness because we make our numbers available, and uh you, you know, it, it, you'd be very hard pressed to find another city that has a sixty-seven percent reduction in stolen vehicles within, within their city. And that has encouraged others to, to come on board.
Now, and Chief, there, there are a variety of reasons, both public safety and, and otherwise, that there is interest or discussions around having communities absorb unincorporated islands nearby, and, and you know, and we have a number of them, uh, you know, either between us and Silicon or us and University Place Tacoma. But uh, to, to what extent are they uh public safety challenges that would be mitigated if we, they were, they were to be, be annexed into the city and with the the jurisdictional change that that would make?
Um, it, it, it would not make a difference to us. Uh, the only change for us is, is just our planning for our, our uh Flock locations. The planning for our Flock locations, uh, the way we mapped it out were, was around critical areas and also entry exits, uh access points for the city, and so um it would just be a minor adjustment for us to make sure that certain areas were covered, and uh we had, had the ability to respond to those areas.
And then a- at the state level legislatively last year, that there was some success, levels of success in the areas around pursuit and, and less so around interactions with youth and, but you, both were areas that more could happen, but is there are there any things that are in the current legislative session that we in our conversations with, with legislators we should really bring to their attention as to the direction they should move on?
Uh, not at this point. We, we remain very active as far as the legislation is concerned, also discussing the same items with them and also through uh other channels to make sure that the areas that we support, the legislation that we support is known, and legislation that we do not support because of one issue or another, uh, they know, uh, whether it's through WASPIC or, or through our, our own our own lobbyists to make sure that, that our needs are represented. And I think that most of the legislation has moved on at this point, but we're, we're trying to stay in touch with them to make sure that, that uh as things come up, we letting them, let them know ahead of time the challenges.
So in, just in terms of your being active with legislators, do you feel you're being listened to?
Uh, absolutely, uh, because uh they have, have reached out to us this year in terms of, of of action, things that they needed to know, and also um I participated with WASPIC on uh podcasts and things of that nature, discussing legislation and legislative changes. Chris WSB went that, went down to Olympia to also um discuss certain legislation and legislative changes.
Now, I, I guess I, I should, did want to pass along that uh in the things that I hear from in the community, both in terms of, of things that are anecdotal or just unsolicited comments that the, that the, the work of the department is both recognized and greatly appreciated by people out in the community, both in terms of the quality of what the department itself does and in terms of some comparative comments between the department and things they read about other. So, so I, so I, you know, I, I really do, do want you to uh feel that the, all the effort that officers are putting for are, they, they, that's going to continue to manifest itself in the level of community support that uh we want, and then I think that we've uh come to expect in Lakewood.
Yes, I, I think more, more of our emphasis has been on uh community engagement uh to make sure we're doing not just the, the enforcement part, but we're also uh engaging other parts of the community like our business district vehicles that we started to get out and talk to uh vehicles. If you get out and talk to people, talk and work with the uh asset protection and other uh parts of the town center. If you go there at any time, you'll probably see one of our vehicles out there with the lights flashing and then moving around uh and also talking to the businesses. They have their phone number. They can call them directly, and we wanted to make sure that we had an immediate response system there for them, and I, I think it has lent it well to uh a more cohesive relationship with the business owners in the town center.
Uh, I think I had Councilmember Laura Sella and then Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for your presentation. I was talking to the city manager earlier today, and the reduction we've seen in crime across the board is something we should really take time to step back and really appreciate. Uh, he mentioned that he thinks this may be the lowest rate we've seen since incorporation, and that's something that should be uh celebrated for sure. To that, to that end, how much of that do you think has been enabled by ordinances we have passed here as a council to support Lakewood PD in terms of uh like our camping ordinance and our public drug use ordinance? Are those tools that you've been able to use to help drive that down?
A- a- absolutely. It's, you know, ho- honestly, it takes um a, e- everyone working together to resolve the crime within, within the city. Before we had the camping ordinance, you could look right outside our, the door right here even during this time, and you would see uh camp, folks camping right here on the steps of City Hall. You don't see that anymore. And the reason you don't see it anymore, it isn't that we made arrests. What we did was we went on an educational campaign after the ordinance was, was passed. We took them a copy of the ordinance. At the time, Sergeant Moody was working down in the courts, and he would go walk it every day and talk to them every day. Hey, you got thirty days. You know, this takes effect during this. Is there anything you need? Uh, our officers came over asking them, how can we help? And uh we were able to get some of them into housing, and we were able to get others to move, move on to other areas. And so it takes a full-scale approach, just like our, our Flock cameras. We could not have done that without uh your help and getting it out there and getting things started.
Great, thank you. Uh, have you also seen a reduction in juvenile crime across the board?
You know, juvenile crime has been one of the, the uh sewer areas for, for us, uh primarily because one of the tools taken away from us is the ability for us to talk to ju- to juveniles. Uh, primarily because one of the tools taken away from us is the ability for us to talk to ju- to juveniles. And um, so ultimately you end up arresting more juveniles than you would. Uh, normally you could resolve an issue, you can resolve uh, certain things or you could um, I I would say years ago when you guys were young, if something happened, sometimes you may have gotten a ride home with an officer and the last thing you wanted them to do is to talk to your parents. Well, that doesn't happen anymore uh, because we're not allowed to to uh, take those actions and we have to make the arrest and and we can't talk to them until they have an attorney. So that I I I wouldn't say that it that it's up. I would say that it's steady and and just because of the way the laws are now.
Okay, thank you. And is there anything we can do in the near term as actions as a council to support Lakewood PD further?
No, uh, right now I think the department is is um, uh, you know, w- we're we're up against some challenges uh, related to personnel, but if we can keep our our numbers where they need to be and we can uh, continue to deploy the cars that we need to deploy, we have the investigators that we need. Uh, then we we as a department should be fine. If if there is anything that this uh, department needs to make the city better, you will see me standing right out here waiting to talk to you.
Okay, great. And then my last question um is uh, I have oh, and this may be out of out of the scope of the uh, police department and it's more the other side of the coin, but as arrests have gone up and you're doing your job tremendously, are you seeing support from the courts? Uh, and maybe that's something the city manager can provide some stats to us later on um, as far as once folks are arrested, what does the the prosecution side look like and are they supporting our police officers in what they do?
Ye- yes, they are. I mean, um, o- one of the things that we have done is to go back and um, provide additional training to our officers in report writing, effective report writing, search warrants and things of that nature to make sure that when we put uh, uh, reports forward for prosecution that we're we're putting together a sound case so that they can make a a good decision on prosecution and the case can move forward. Um, I I don't have the stats from the court because, you know, we're we're two separate entities. But I I think the the officers are are not hesitant about making the necessary arrests when they're supposed to.
Great. Thank you very much for everything that your department does.
Thank you, councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Um, just a couple of questions. Uh, one related to to flock. Um, do you guys record any data from the flock system as far as, you know, is there any total hits per year or per day that we're getting? Are are you able to quantify like arrests or situations resolved due to them being there? Or is there any sort of tracking that, you know, we can sh- show or or be able to see that's, you know, that they are? Any any sort of data, I guess, that would, you know, validate their use and?
Okay, so so there are a couple of ways that that we can we can show this and you want to answer this one?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so flock not only helps the patrol officers in the field as stolen vehicles uh, uh, flow through our city. They give the officers alerts and officers are able to respond to that location. It also provides a rear picture of the vehicle along with a license plate number. So officers in the field um, uh, do respond to that. However, on the other side, uh, flock has been one of the biggest investigative tools that we could possibly use because um, of the follow-up feature to whereas when something occurs, we get a report and it gives a description of that vehicle and we're able to go back and find out who was in that area, which vehicle was in that area. So there's there's follow-up there too. Uh, Jeff Al Ryan runs our our um, liaison with flock and so he would be able to have more information on it.
Thank you. So the quick answer is yes, flock has a very robust uh, tracking and audit system. And all of those questions that you're asking are tracked in flock. I don't have that information available to me today. I'd be happy to come back and and give you guys a report uh, with those numbers, but yeah, um, flock tracks hits, it tracks images that it's captured. There's no live video, it's just all imagery. Um, but all of that data is retained in the system. Uh, images are only retained for thirty days unless it's evidence. And if it's evidenced uh, related to a crime, then we upload that into our Axon Evidence System. But that's part of Flock's deal is um, they only retain data for thirty days and then it just falls off the radar, but the the metadata is still there.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I I think it'd be, I think it'd be worthwhile data to have. Um, you know, we invested a bunch in in flock and um, it seems to be, you know, every time I talk to an officer, they're super excited that we're using it and that we have it available and you know, they want more of them and so um, I I think that, you know, any sort of data that, you know, could support that um, would be interesting to see and and see how much of a, you know, how much of a benefit it really is um, making, you know, with us investing in that technology. That's the only flock related question I had. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So I I will tell you that at this time, we as the police department, we're not requesting additional funding for flock. Uh, what we've done, uh, it works effectively well for us. We place them in key points within the city. And and there's a balancing act on the funding versus what we what we really need. Of course, we can throw them all over the place, but what I'm looking at is effectiveness versus the dollars. And so what we've done is on top of what the city provided, we also went back and applied for additional grants, which we did receive, which allowed us to add additional flock cameras for a a two-year period in addition to what we already had. So I think right now we're right in that sweet spot to whereas we have uh, uh, value for the for the dollar is also effectiveness in terms of reducing crime.
That's great to hear. Thank you. Um, one other, a couple other things, the uh, you you had a a slide in here about the retail theft program. Um, one of the ride-alongs I went on, we I was with um, Officer Mike, who was doing the retail theft um, at the time. And I really um, am excited to hear that you, you know, it's becoming more of a staple and uh, because when when you're driving around the town center, which is where, you know, most of all the businesses happening in in Lakewood and you're seeing cops sipping around, like, you know, it's it's really eye-opening to see that, wow, you know, the cops are active in Lakewood and they're getting people, you know, stealing and all this stuff. And it I think it helps provide that that sense of security um, at the town center. So I really appreciate that. Um, and then the other thing that I learned uh, while I was at the STEAM fair, Lakewood ha- police department had a the drone folks there and I was chatting with them. Um, and that was just really, really awesome. Um, I appreciated that you guys came there. Um, my son was, he's got a little drone and and they were like, oh, yeah, you know, get 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 your get your pilot license and you can start training. And I was like, wow, I didn't even think that there's pilots for drones, you know, and stuff, so. Um, but part of the drones that was uh, that they did was at the warehouse, having them go in and being, they were talking about how that whole process went and they were able to, you know, take the drone inside the warehouse where the guy was kind of held up and and be able to see inside inside the warehouse kind of what was going on. And it was really like, wow, you know, that was totally safe and have it have to send people in. They, you know, just had the drone in there and um, so it was really cool to hear. Um, yeah, you guys are doing great work and I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Chief, for the presentation. It was great to see all of the other awards in advance too. So that was wonderful. Um, my colleagues have really said most everything that I would want to say. Really, it appreciate the flock system and how that has really um, impacted our community and really helped. And I hope more jurisdictions really uh, use it and I find out how effective it is going off of what council member Pearson said. Some extra data would be great to see on that and just the numbers and how effective it is. And so I really appreciate that. And then how we talked about you have more tools in your tool in your toolbox, so to be effective and do what you guys need to do. I'm glad that that has also worked. And speaking of the retail theft program, I hear about it. I have a teenager and her friends and they're very, you know, they talk and they know that it's happening. And I hear it from adults too, and they're glad it's happening. So everyone that I have talked to about seeing um, LPD around, it is nice to see them. You feel a little bit safer. You know that they're there. You know, it's not just a blue light and, you know, at the Safeway parking lot. So it's more than that. So I really, really appreciate that. And seeing you all out in the community with um, in your community outreach and all the different ways you're getting out there, like the drone at the the fair you went to. Um, I think that that's just wonderful and really appreciate all that you guys do. And thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Chief, great job. I've been tracking numbers. I mean, back in the day, I've gone back way to like when the city first started and I was looking at the UCR statistics and everything else. There was a year in the late nineteen nineties where Lakewood reported over a thousand burglaries in a year. So basically three a day. Um, your group has now had that down to less than one a day. And and when people break into people's homes, it's a real violation of their, you know, it's their home, right? And um, same thing with motor vehicle theft. I think that's probably the lowest number. We've been below five hundred, I think, in the past, but it's just it th- these are really, really great numbers that your folks really should take great pride in, in in really helping get those numbers down. Um, clearly the the violent crime is a little tougher, I guess, but I I do have a question, kind of shots fired, which I think is another one, because people hear shots and they they freak out, right? They don't feel safe. Big drops in that number. How do you, what do you do to get shots fired down? Is it just a matter of you've just found people who have guns and you've been able to get those guns from them or is there is there a trick to this?
No, there's not. So when I look at the the shots fired number, I look at it like, okay, for every you know, one person who goes out and fire their gun or fire in the air or whatever, you may have three people who call. So you'll have multiple calls related to uh, one incident. And um, the to to me, the overall thing has in in that has an impact on effectiveness is making sure that you have the appropriate number of cars on the street at the appropriate time. And so uh, we earlier, I want to say in twenty four, we went through a couple of times where we adjusted the hours of the officers to make sure that the we had the appropriate number of officers on the street as related to calls for service. So we always want to match the calls for service uh, with the the demand. So we want to make sure that the officers are on on um, on the streets at the appropriate time. The other part was making sure that we had the total number of officers that the department truly needs to have on the street. And this, you know, um, this past year and twenty twenty-three, the department went through a major change with retirements. And so you weren't having the numbers that you need on the street. And uh, I think even prior to that, the department was wasn't up to full staff. And so that was a priority to get us to full staff so that we can have these reductions. We can add the business district car. We can do the the retail theft emphasis without an an issue. And we can do the extra things that we need to have that impact on crime. And so um, seeing those numbers down is is um, not shocking. I think it can come down a little bit more. And I think there are a few things that we can do additionally to bring down crime and it goes it goes back to um, uh, the fact that we're hiring the right people who have that that desire to get out and serve the community, have an impact on on crime. They're not afraid to respond to calls. They are eager to become involved and they want to make a difference in the community.
So Chief, we we now are going out to uh, desert in the driveway like
Yes.
every other week or something. And yeah, we've got this schedule uh, that we're trying to work out. So that we're right in the neighborhoods granular and people are gonna talk to us. What neighborhoods do you feel? Have you seen the most success and what neighborhoods do you feel might be still a little bit problematic? For in- for instance, we we went in to, uh, we went to a meeting in the Springbrook neighborhood. And they really, they gave us an earful, really. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't disrespectful in any way, but they said, hey, you know, there's these characters down the street. It was seemed kind of localized, but that that's the kind of stuff we hear. So then, of course, we're like, oh, we gotta do something about it. Where do you see big signs of success? If you had to give us a success story and how you've really helped helped clean up a neighborhood and then other neighborhoods that where you still see challenges?
So I I would say the entire city is a success.
Okay.
And I I would say one uh, neighborhood over another. And the reason that I say that is that that our our crime numbers are not uh, clustered. They're they're not, there are no patterns to uh, crime. What you have is a more of a scattered pattern across the city. Uh, there isn't one area of the city that we need to uh, go into with um, uh, a extreme large force to resolve an issue or problem. And you mentioned Springbrook and the the difference in Springbrook is three hours. And the reason I say three hours is because it rests on two things, three hours and communication. They came to you, they told you they have a problem with this guy and et cetera down the street. He's doing this, he's doing that.
Yeah.
Uh, the city manager told me and within three hours, that person had been uh, located, arrested and was in jail. So the difference is communication uh, to the police department. Uh, it does no good for people to um, go back and forth about an issue amongst themselves, but don't share it with law enforcement and don't share it uh, with those who can actually do something about it. So the problem you're referring to, communication, three hours.
Good, thank you.
Well, thank you, Chief. I'll echo all the laudatory comments uh, by the group. Great work. Obviously, it takes a team. Uh, we're all in this together. I do have a couple of questions. Following up on Mr. Boki's comments about the neighborhood associations, we are now kind of going going through and annotating our availability for uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven sort of newly designated. Some are not new, but some are, the boundaries are newly designated. So years ago, we used to have the, you know, the CSO's go and be designated with this sort of district. With these new boundaries, is there some internal discussion? They're not completely new, but there's some internal discussion on making them more distinct for neighborhoods so they can have self-identification, go to their meetings. Are we going to have an assigned patrol officer go to these meetings so the neighbors who do show up will get to know one another and the assigned uh, officer in that district?
They do respond to to the various meetings and um, they do have their districts assigned to them. And so uh, yes, absolutely, we're we plan to keep that in place.
Great. That would be, that would be great. Um, and then you already addressed the Springbrook question. I assume that that activity that has been uh, reported to us uh, somewhat consistently has been dealt with effectively. Okay. On the issue of homelessness, I appreciate your comments tonight that the tool that council provided by way of the ordinance has been an effective tool in the toolbox.
Mm-hmm.
As you know, and I think maybe you or member of your staff met with our state legislators who are looking to make some changes uh, via House Bill thirteen eighty
Yes.
to address or change uh, cities' abilities to sort of call their own shots, so to speak. to address or change cities' abilities to sort of call their own shots, so to speak. So and I'm asking to sponge any sort of policy pronouncement. So what do you understand to be the problem that they want to solve differently than what we're doing?
You know, just like we were one of, one of those who got out there ahead of things related to flock, I think we're well ahead as relates to homelessness as well. Investing in the right places, making sure that we have places for them to go. We were able to connect very difficult people who have been around for a very long time with housing. We were able to get, connect folks with other areas where where they could get the the help that they needed. And I I I spoke out very loudly as far as that law is is proposed law is concerned. And the reason that I I did that is because I can see the change here in Lakewood. I can see what our officers were able to do. I can see the communication with with our officers. And and we're one of the cities that actually get out there to where our officers get to know who they are and to talk to them and learn their name, learn where they're from and learn about them individually so that we can provide that individual care and individual help. We're one of the cities that has have a mental health contact team that that goes out with our officers to provide some additional support. And 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 where they may not talk to us, they'll talk to them. And where they may not talk to them, they'll talk to us. And and I I just think that it's it's a model program for the state. And but I I don't think we should should be hindered by the threat of additional litigation because we use steps one, two, and four. And they want us to go through one, two, three, four, or something of that nature.
Very good. Last question on the data with regard to collisions. Are you seeing any sort of patterns that certain intersections or certain streetscapes tend to be more problematic than others or not?
No, I think, I think our our officers have been working exceptionally hard to address this problem. I think I won't call you out. Don't worry about it. But there there's an officer in this room who's wrote probably probably five, over five hundred tickets this past year, trying to address the the problem within the city and address some of the speed. Most of it's related to speed, driving too fast for the prevailing conditions. And then we've we've seen probably an uptick in D U I a little bit later at night. And so there are a number of things, distracted driving, there are a number of things that we have to address to to bring that number down. And and I'd really like to see that number come down.
Great. Very good. Well, that was the last question on my list. Again, thank you all for all the good work you continue to do. And we appreciate the outreach. I enjoyed the community coffee thing at Starbucks. I think we had another group there. So continue the good work and make the interface and people just grow in their respect for all the work you're doing. So thank you for that.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yep. Okay, next, we have an update on the Nyanza Road Improvement Project. And we have Troy Pakwinski, I believe, our Capitol Projects Manager with us tonight. And for this, I think we can stand up and go down by the horseshoe dais. I believe that's appropriate, Mr. Coffield.
Do the slideshow first?
Absolutely. We'll do the slideshow first and we can sit down and look at the plans. They're gonna do, he's gonna do the slideshow first, real quick. While I'm here.
Everyone.
Yeah. Yeah, we've got four.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm J V Hurr. I'm the project manager for this project. Today, I'm gonna be giving you an update on the Nyanza Road, uh, street improvement. And you see on the slide, that's the project boundaries for the project. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's hard for me to tell where.
Okay, here's our schedule. The key dates to observe are final design complete will be the first week of April, twenty twenty-five. And then council award anticipated May fifth. And then fully open to traffic is another key date, November fourteen of this year. And then the remaining five or so months will be striping and streetlights. Next slide? Nope. Okay, these are the updated scope items we'll be covering today. Roughly five of them. There's additional right-of-way that we're requiring. Traffic control plans, pedestrian benches that was brought up last June. We also have a water main design. And two yield signs that we'll talk about briefly. So the right-of-way acquisition for Nyanza involves four parcels, two to the southwest of the proposed roundabout location and two to the north, roughly three thousand square feet in total. We have a right-of-way, we're working with a right-of-way agent that's working on getting all four property owners. I think we've got about, I think we secured probably two of the four and working on the the remaining two. This is our basic concept for traffic control, which will be impacted by the roundabout construction. So similar to the traffic control that was done when work was being performed on Washington and veterans, we'll be pushing traffic along Gravely Lake. And then maintaining an eastbound traffic only through the the Gravely Lake and Nyanza intersection. And then on to one twelfth or north on Gravely Lake. For the most part, Nyanza Drive will be closed to local traffic, but there will be times during the water main design that we'll be able to maintain northbound traffic only on Nyanza. But this is the basic concept of our traffic control plan. So for the proposed roundabout, pretty straightforward. We'll have two basic phases. Again, eastbound only traffic while we construct the roundabout, the the southern half first. And then constructing the northern half, all the while maintaining eastbound only traffic. This is the pro- proposed bench. We are proposing two locations for benches along Nyanza. And you'll be able to see them on the plans once we roll them out. But basically, one at Nyanza Park and one at one eighteenth. Yep. And then we're looking to provide enhanced yield signs. The yield signs are there currently at those locations. But these will provide flashing lights, some enhancement to help.
Thank you. Those are the questions I I get often about that slip lane. People are always yammering to us about that. That'll be helpful.
And that was my last slide. So if you'd like to
Sure.
join us at the round.
Yeah, we'll come on up and join you up there.
So J V played it a bit modest when he talked about it. The benches were put in due to the response and what we've seen from the past projects we've had. So forward thinking, okay, let's go ahead and put the benches in. The slip lane that you're speaking to with the high yield that we looked at, that's specifically also in response to what we've seen from the citizens and what they're relating to. So the the point is to go ahead and address what we can, forward thinking. At the same time, I think there's a total of like maybe five trees that come out of this entire project.
That's great.
Based on the placement and location. Still keeps the straight alignment coming down the road, keeps the center end of the right-of-way, allows us to go ahead and use water at the same time. Do utilities to get better daylight, but using the same contractor. So it's a collaboration between both the Water District and the city so we can move forward. It's a pretty good project, pretty straightforward, and one that we definitely need so that when we go ahead and we look at one twelfth later this year, we'll have this to go ahead and use. That is the bypass for that.
That's true. So
Will one twelfth pick up here then on Gravely or you don't need it? It's already got.
That's already got sidewalk. Starts there moving forward. It is forward compatible with designs that you could be proposing after the Lakewood downtown. So study we're doing.
Yeah.
After the study.
The raise grant that we're looking at, that we have, that we have to prep for, this has been designed so that we can kind of roll in and maintain that multimodal path and the traffic. So there's always like the green street, blue field path, everything like that. All of that gets pulled in so that we have compatible design. No rework. The idea is to avoid having to tear anything up in the future to go ahead and match up. Because that would just be a waste of dollars.
My my bike friends who chafe at the lack of dedicated sort of bike lanes, are they gonna be on the sidewalks this time as well? Or we can have Cheryl lanes for them?
No Cheryl lanes, but the ten-foot sidewalks are meant to be.
Like the rest of the loop?
Yeah.
Got it. So one thing to contemplate, I assume the interconnector road from Thorn to Gravely is still moving forward. Is Washdon finalized their bidding for that? Because that's gonna connect ultimately at some point. We talked about the gap down there, right? Or or down wherever it is.
Is it? So that that was my understanding. This is still moving forward.
Yeah, okay.
They start next one?
No, 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 they're gonna, they're gonna advertise for bits.
For bits. So that's going forward. Okay.
So this is the larger
Right, the ten footer.
The ten footer. This is just a regular standard.
So so realistically, it's six foot is not standard. That's still large compared to what you would require for pedestrian access.
Right.
So we take account for that. So people have pedestrian accessibility and multi-use of it, especially if you're looking at A D A accessibility. It's a big thing with our A D A transition plan that we're affording that. So again.
The big piece down there is figuring out how bikers are gonna get safely around so they can eventually go to that Thorn Lane interconnector road and get all the way to Tillicum, right? Yeah, that that's something to keep in the back of our mind, how we're gonna do that transition. Because if the bike path is on the right-hand side going east, if you will, we gotta make sure they can get to where they need to go. They're gonna have to go out there. Yeah. And the other thing I just wanted to ask, which I always ask, is because there was a street light here that we're not going to have to have anymore. Would love to make sure we have some power here. So if we want to do something uplit or signage, because that's really gonna be the the entrance into the downtown, if we wanna eventually do something special.
Each one of these streetlights.
No, no, he's talking about a conduit, basically power.
Like we did on Washington.
But now it's, I think it's planned for power.
So we can do that and have something eventually planned for that? Okay, good.
So in the same thing.
At at during the project, the initial, what's the initial landscaping of this? Is it grass or is it?
Stone or?
Do you want to leave some of it out for something more special? Or do you wanna, it's currently planned for something similar to what you have at the gravel Washington or the south end of gravel Nyanza South. We can certainly leave space.
Well, I I think we wanted to look, when the, when it opens for traffic, we guess we want to look presentable. But with some flexibility to later add a an amenity in the in the center of it.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to find it there.
How how big is this one compared to the other roundabouts? Like the one on Washington is pretty big, but this looks a lot.
Gravely veterans, which you're looking at that, that size.
Looks pretty close to the, look pretty close to the veterans, vet, 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 veterans.
So you're not gonna be able to really probably get something two sizable in there?
Okay.
And then
Yeah, it'll, it's, yeah, of interest, yeah. I filled it up a little bit.
Okay.
So is there any concern with like traffic queuing up here where we used to have two lanes that came and one was a turning and one went through? Is there gonna be? Is this all?
No, because your primary movement through that intersection for people coming northbound is to the east. So it's north to east or it's kind of straight through from those going eastbound straight through. So the the movement is almost free flow for those coming westbound.
And then I've got to, we just have nothing but issues with semi-truck traffic. How do we keep them out of where they're not supposed to go? Like, you know, if someone's trying to come this way, this looks like a nasty situation. How do we get people away from ruining these on a weekly basis?
The other thing we're gonna do with this one that we haven't done before is we're gonna move to a different type of circulating island central curve. That's a little bit more rolled. It's higher. They pour it in two different phases, but it's more rolled so that we don't have somebody banging it up.
Yeah.
We're already kind of getting agitated. Fix those curves here, there and everywhere.
Yep, okay.
Okay, and then what's the count on the number of trees to be?
Three.
Five.
Three. Five.
Yeah. Five. Are these raised mediums? Or traffic?
Those are, those are raised, but they're rolled.
Same.
In that same kind of.
So typically because of the big trucks and the fact that they make a mistake, you wanna go with rolled. If you don't go with rolled, you knock it out and then spend time with insurance replacing it.
Yep.
That we've learned that. Two locations are raised, so.
Yeah, I was even wondering if just keeping these ones as not even raised and just having it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can just maneuver if you needed it.
I believe they're a four-inch raised for those.
And and then what is the what what type of poles are the street lighting going to be on?
Concrete, exposed aggregate concrete is what you guys.
So they're gonna manage the poles that are on on Gravely Lake going towards towards Washington.
Towards Washington. From here and toward Washington, that matched those things.
These ones you're utilizing existing poles?
Yes, that's the street.
They're already on there.
Yep. Oh, yeah, yeah, they are.
Adding the poles to the western side.
Yeah, it should be a good project. It gives you enough room over here, right?
And the traffic control, things that you showed us on your presentation around this intersection of where there are times when you can only go one way through and there'll be a detour the other way. And that, that, that's only for the period of time when the roundabout is being constructed. And is that like thirty days or is that?
Well, I put it, it's roughly thirty days, but it'll be spaced over the two segments.
So for 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 two weeks, you can only go one way and two weeks you can only go the other?
It really is only going one way, but it's just gonna be around the top and then around the bottom until it's fully open again.
It'll take about three weeks for the first segment and then probably about a week, week and a half with the.
But for the entire time, the route may change, but it's always gonna be towards downtown.
It's gonna go towards downtown.
You gotta go down.
Okay.
It's actually, we walked it and it's not that. We're gonna do so a little bit of patching here and there.
And then overlay.
Right, overlay.
You're not gonna be able to go to the.
No, just look at it. Even with the the water issues, not even cutting that any across, getting services across, so we're planning on keeping
Up with the new broadband, dude. Is he gonna be able to lay his cable or?
Maybe fiber.
Yeah, I thought E D fiber was supposed to actually be on poles.
Yeah, it should be.
When we heard about it.
Is it underground?
Yeah. It's full underground. That's the draw.
So, so that'd be interesting then, because we did hear about him coming in and obviously we saw that portion when it came in. But he's not been talking to us about being involved in this road. We should reach out anyway, so we'll reach out.
Yeah.
As long as it's open.
Yep.
Might as well get in.
And then are we receiving individual mailboxes or cluster mail? We're clicking into that. There are cases where cluster mailboxes where the properties are located, warrants a cluster mailbox, but they they are fairly far apart. You might get two or three together.
Hopefully not.
How does sidewalk?
Their mailbox at the end of, at the end of Linwood. Exactly. Yep.
How has that?
Yeah.
Has there been any issues with the mail? I, it seems like there's like they're, they're out backs to the main road. But then I think when like the, when gravelly lake first opened up, the mailman was driving on the sidewalk or something. So I like.
Maybe we did it down hard more, looks and seems to function better the way you guys did that. We had that offset.
Shifted to where they're offsetting it.
Yeah.
Because they keep getting hit too. That's the other aspect of this and, you know, it's not.
And then when you go out to retrieve your mail, you have to stand on an arterial to open up your box, which is dangerous.
We've moved to putting them kind of somewhat behind the sidewalk, but it does lend where we do have widened sidewalks where the mail people that we've been calling.
Yeah.
The post office.
Okay.
Asking them, hey, your postal carrier, please don't keep, continue driving down the sidewalk.
We don't, we don't have Pierce Transit having to stop that.
No. Not on that scene.
Ain't they right here? That's, that's that balance though, between working with the post office is what I'd actually do.
Is this, is this access going to be restricted to like right out or can they come?
Currently kind of, they they have an island there currently. Uh, or.
Sorry.
Oh, no.
Proximity to it.
No, it's the other one I'm thinking of.
That one should have a turnway.
Yeah.
Turnway. They'll be able to go then.
They'll be able to go this way.
Yep.
And these pedestrian things, are they have lit stuff on this crosswalk areas or not too much?
So they they've recently gone to a mandatory R R F B retro rectangular rapid flashing beacon for multi-lane roundabout crossings.
Okay.
That's new since we've done the south. So we don't propose any there. We do propose one down here at nine minutes apart.
Okay.
Or an enhanced crosswalk.
Got it.
Like right?
No, they're just, we put them on hipkins. Where else have we been putting these?
Talking about.
When you hit the button, you would hear the audio and see.
Not audio.
Not audio, just a flash, just a flash.
That looks nice.
I got a few questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, so first, the sidewalks on gravelly, how wide are those? The big ones, are those fourteen or ten?
They're, I believe. Twelve or they ten? They're either twelve or ten.
I was just curious how they go there. And then what drove the location of this crosswalk? I know this is a dead end back here versus this goes all the way through and is a major sort of thoroughfare for folks coming out of there.
Well, it was, I think, talking to B C R A, the designer, it was just sort of where it was in comparison to.
They're like a third, a third, a third. Yeah, so I would suggest here, if there's space for the crosswalk and then the bench on that side. Just because there's a lot more traffic through here and that'll get fed through that and from people coming out of Madera.
So we we'll take a look at it. The only concern I think I would have would be with more traffic is more chance for pedestrian interaction. At a crosswalk.
Yep.
Versus being at a more remote or a chance where when they turn, they have line of sight to be able to see someone that's on the road.
Yeah, the other thought is the advantage here is you've got more right of way to put a bench in there. Is there enough gap between sidewalk and right of way down at this end?
The area gets pretty tight, but we still have, for example, here, yeah, we right there, yeah. So just behind the sidewalk, there's, there's still some room there.
Okay.
Is this what you're buying or is that what you already have?
Yep, we already have that.
Okay, that's just a lot like.
Yeah.
And then. These little pullouts with the mailboxes or something there?
No.
They're just driveway.
I have a question then, so that's the same logic. I mean, this is a really busy intersection here too. Lot of pedestrians, I would say, be more here like what council member Larissa was suggesting down there. So why would you go less pedestrian? Because this is super.
We have one here too.
Yeah, I know.
Oh.
But that's.
That's the.
But what I, but it's still a bench down here is what is my question. And so you were saying down there, it makes more sense to go onto a road that's not used as much because of pedestrians. But I know this one is very, very busy because it connects over to Bridgeport, that a path right away.
So the reason, the reason that's really there is because there's an intersection. So at an intersection, everybody has a reason to actually look versus a mid-block crossing where you have to put in flashing, anything of that nature. So we will first always go to place them near an intersection. And if we have the option of a lower, lower capacity intersection, that's where we'll go. Because the other option would be to take it even further down. But then we're looking at.
Because if they have a lot of people going there, they might want to walk to their own up there.
So.
I just, I just know it's very active right there.
Well, and I mean, that's why you pick the flasher.
Yeah.
There is because of the activity. It's, it's a balancing when we look at it.
Yeah.
Between pedestrian safety and where people are going to go and preventing a mid-block crossing.
The other question I had is we've got significant right of way over here, right? About thirty feet beyond the sidewalk. Yeah, the bright one ends back here. As we clean this up, can we look at, I don't know if it's, we call it a linear park, but some landscaping to remove some of the underbrush. So it's not a place where people could potentially camp out or cause issues because we'll have more visibility if we take out the laurel and the ivy and the stuff back in that area. Leave the trees, there's a number of fir trees back there, but perhaps clean up some of the, the lower stuff.
Area for people if they're really.
It would be.
The vision, I think, too, that we talked about years ago was once the interconnector road does get done. This is a wonderful thing for people to go from the town center out to Tillicum, around Heritot Park, come down. This might be a nice little stop to be able to sit.
I agree.
Along, along the same lines.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're talking about this potentially being a sort of art walk around gravelly lake because you've got the interconnectedness of the sidewalk on the other side. You could make it a sort of a green loop.
Yeah. So we can definitely take a look at that. But one thing to keep in mind is these houses here, they've already had a massive separation from the road and what they're used to, despite the fact they don't know where the roadway is. Right away is, you remove all the underbrush and expose the back of the home, you may get some phone calls at the same time.
Where's their fencing at? Where's Madera's fencing? I got a call from the HOA, they want to coordinate with you folks on.
Yeah, we, we spoke to them.
Their fencing.
We spoke to Gail.
Yeah, good.
Yep.
Okay.
So they're.
I think their fencing is right on the right of way.
So it's back here.
Oh, it is back there. Okay, great.
So I think we could absolutely clean that up.
Yeah.
Part of this.
It'll look kind of cool.
Yeah. Nice to see what the options are there.
Light in there to keep that activity on.
Yeah.
Yeah, so thank you.
We have two lights there. So I guess maybe that's good enough. But I would say maybe have another.
You're gonna get some light from this one too?
Yeah. You got one right at the intersection.
Yeah. Should be pretty good. The creek, that'd be a nice project.
Yeah.
Last. The water main will be one of the first ones to build.
I don't know who would say.
A longer, long drainage and then the streetlight.
I'm a Jason.
Then they'll start working on the curb. The last thing is the roundabout.
Okay.
So for the overwhelming majority, northbound traffic will be going through on Niantzis only. And then gravelly lake will be untouched.
What does your traffic study say when someone's going this way? How many people go this way and what percentage goes this way?
Sixty, forty. Sixty percent are going to the south, forty are going to the.
Help me out.
Forty percent are going this way.
Forty percent going sixty. Okay, so it's a pretty even split.
Pretty close.
Yeah.
But the opposite direction is, I imagine it's more like eighty percent are going this way, twenty percent are going there.
Yeah, we had transport group or traffic engineer do an analysis and given the traffic volume and the design of the roundabout, it should be a little A service.
Is this like an ideal sized roundabout for this intersection or is it on the smaller side or larger slide or?
It's a little on the smaller side as far as inscribed diameter. You'd want to go probably ten feet bigger, but you start getting any bigger, you're starting to get into the buffer zone of that creek. So we don't want to do that or purchasing somebody's, you know, backyard or getting into the, the driveway for that condo association on the.
Yeah, and you'd almost make part of this building.
These guys are probably okay. Because I talked to one of these homeowners. Isn't it?
Yeah, but he was saying this is the creek over here.
Yeah.
I think Earl is either there, one of those.
He's this guy.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah.
He'd be probably fine even a little bit more, but you know, if you needed it, because he can't use this over here anyway because of the creek.
Do we have stormwater problems?
No, not in this segment of the creek. As far as capacity goes.
No, it is. Does surface water end up?
Yeah, but we have a filter, we have a huge filter vault in through here for all Niantzis. So it does provide, it does provide enhanced treatment for the, for the sea, for the creek before it discharges.
Are you gonna have?
No, we're going to offset our increased impervious with minor infiltration. Further back, this isn't too small. It's monthly.
Yeah. Certainly, there's a lot of traffic that goes through there.
There'll just be. Some times during the day, so.
Eventually, we're talking about a street end down on Linwood, right? Would it make sense to consider another crosswalk down here at this end? I know we're somewhat close to the.
Close to the roundabout. Yeah, it might not be a bad idea to put something there.
To put flasher on the right side, like you said, see the flasher at the turn.
Yeah, we, those flashes have gotten on both sides thankfully, so.
Because I know this goes in, over and out. So that.
I'll have them consider that along with moving the other one down. That might also offset it a little bit to where it's not too close together.
Yeah, we'll look into that. Okay, thank you.
Well, I think it's great. Any other questions? You guys need any other pithy comments or corrections?
No.
You got plenty of it?
We appreciate the feedback. Feedback's how we're gonna deal with it and I won't yell into it. I'll move over here, sound a little better.
Good feedback, I think.
Yeah. Okay. So, yeah, we, we took away what you were looking at, some notes on there about some of the crossings, what we're looking at for the roundabout as well as the potential for the opening up of some of the underbrush to kind of maybe give a garden style walk in the future.
The other thing that's on the wish list eventually for new sidewalk plans. We've talked about Niantzis Park, as having sidewalks on that highway. I know this is a sixty foot right of way, just the same as this. Something to keep in mind as we're forward thinking, I know it's on our. Starting the tip, that might not be about to be along with adding the other segment.
Add to the tip.
I think it's. Don motorized, if we're bike and.
Definitely what we're going to have to get shown right here is whether. Take a question or say what we do there. And then you want to go.
Where is that?
Okay.
This seems to be a, you don't start running. Okay, literally right.
With the gas stations.
Well, no, that's asking down here. But this is coming to the events. Yes. On the way to the city, the way that right here, off that sidewalk.
We have to get Congress. Or the need to all would have.
Excuse me, council, you're still in a meeting and right now basically what we have on the record is yes, sorry.
Hey. Well, thank you JB and Troy and Jeff for the overview. I think you got the comments from council and appreciate that. It sounds like we have some thoughts for even future tip additions down the road. So that'll be great. So that concludes the items for tonight's discussion. Those items tentatively scheduled for the March seventeen meeting are listed on your program or your agenda tonight. So we can return now to reports by Mr. Coffield.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. First of all, I'd like to thank you for getting back to me on the, on the schedule for desserts in the driveway. So I'll follow up with Deputy Mayor Moss, but there's definitely some leading contenders here in terms of when you'll have a multitude of these events later this spring and summer and into the fall. I know I had sent you a note earlier this week, but just a friendly reminder that A W C is seeking board members specifically for District Six, which covers Lakewood. And certainly if you have the time, you know, I would encourage you to apply for that position. I think having Lakewood on the A W C board would, would certainly be worthwhile. And, you know, if not this time around, certainly the next time around, given the importance that A W C plays in formulating public policy as it relates to cities and towns. Earlier today, Mayor Whalen received a letter from our sister city, City of Gimhee in the Republic of Korea, extending an, extending invitation for city representatives as well as a performance troupe to come and attend their cultural festival, which is in the middle of April. I think it kicks off on, it's April eleventh. And so the opportunity to travel there would be from the tenth, which is a Thursday through Sunday, the thirteenth. I did just want to bring that to the council's attention and I know I spoke with the mayor earlier and perhaps under council comments, you might want to have a brief conversation about that. If you do want to send a party over there, please know that time is short. On one hand, you do have a budget that's allocated to travel to a sister city. You did allocate funds totaling about thirteen thousand dollars to go to the Philippines earlier this year. However, that, that, that invitation never materialized, that event never came together. And so you do have some funds. Now, we are expecting our Filipino sister city, which is in Buong, the city of municipality of Buong, to perhaps extend an invitation later this year for you folks to come visit, but we have not heard on that. So I would just point that out. Also, time is short and it's four weeks, actually four weeks from tomorrow that you would be traveling. So don't know what the cost would be and things along those lines or, but really the, the, what's needed is airfare and then incidental transportation costs since the sister city picks up lodging and food and things along those lines and transportation. Once, once on the ground, so. But again, I will, I will let you handle that under council comments. Under a couple of new businesses, I don't know if you might have mentioned to you, so Dix Burgers is interested in expanding into Pierce County. They have reached out to Becky Newton, our Economic Development Manager in the past, and she had reached out to them recently and they had said, oh, yeah, the good, great timing. Because we believe we are now ready to move into Pierce County from South King County. So they had been, had sent over their site selection criteria in terms of what they're looking at. So we're putting some options for some sites together for them, for them to consider. I think one of our biggest selling points is the proximity to J B L M and just, you know, the lunch and the dinner crowd and everything in between. Because Dix, they just have a churn throughout the day and into the evening and into the night as well. So also a grocery outlet, which used to be here in Lakewood over Pacific Highway. We understand they have an interest in taking the vacant Big Lots location on a hundredth. So just wanted to just give you, give you a heads up on that. Grocery outlet. Also want to compliment, you know, our, our finance department and the leadership of our deputy city manager, Todd Kraus. And of course, is this very strong reflection on the city council and, you know, our department directors and all city staff for being recognized with the G F O A's Government Finance Officers Association, their achievement for excellence in financial reporting for, for our budget. I still call it the distinguished budget award. I think they changed the name, but that's what I know it and I'm not changing now. So I still call it the distinguished budget award. But it is a very positive reflection on the city and, and really checks all the boxes in terms of the importance of that document as it relates to it being a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide. And I would say most importantly, a communications device. And again, very positive reflection on all of you, again, our department directors as well as Ms. Kraus and, and her team. As part of your next regular meeting on, on April seventh, I just wanted to give you a heads up. We are bringing forward a proposed ordinance to amend the administrative component of the Lakewood municipal code. To, um, amend the administrative component of the Lakewood, um, municipal code. And it, and it has to do with how we handle code compliance issues and, um, and, and enforcement, for example. Um, you know, issuing stop work orders or red tags and stuff like that. So on one hand, within each chapter of the code, depending upon what the issue is, there is language that is specific to that. Um, but it's not consistent throughout, throughout the different chapters, and sometimes that does create some challenges, they're not. You know, huge or anything, but they do create some bumps in the road, and so, um, our, our new planning and public works director, he is recommending that. We essentially have some umbrella language in the administrative code that is just really clear on what the process and, um. Um, the expectation is, is it, is it relates to that, so then it applies across, um, every single chapter, and then over time. Um, as we address changes in those respective chapters, we can simply eliminate that language, uh, given that we'll have it at, um, you know, right up front. So, again, just wanted to give you a courtesy heads up, but they'll be in front of you at your next regular meeting to give you, um, an overview and an, and an, and an update on that. Um, also, I just wanted to share, I won't go into any details, but, um, the planning and public works department continues to focus across a number of fronts on our permitting. Process and making a number of improvements, and I know, for example, you're aware that we're, um, gonna be launching a new online permit system called Camino. And, um, it's been defined to me as kind of the TurboTax in that, um, of, of, of permitting systems and that. When you go into the system, it won't let you move forward unless you've checked all the boxes that your application is complete, which then will reduce the. Amount of times that we have to get back with folks and then gives them an opportunity if they are missing something that they can reach out to us, so. But that, that is expected to come online sometime later this summer, but they're doing a lot of other things, including. Uh, being a, a, available for, um, in-person meetings, online meetings, um, also a number of new brochures. Uh, checklist and things along those lines, so those will be steadily, uh, rolled out and you can expect that to continue. Into the very, the very, very near future. Um, also, um, um, Mr. Remack is also identified just some other things in the code that need to be addressed. Um, and he'll be bringing those forward, you know, throughout the year, for example, one of them, he came to me recently, he wanted to know. Um, why aren't breweries and wineries, for example, that are allowed in industrial zones, is there a history there? I was like, I don't know, that's a great point, and. So he, uh, identified the fact that that is a fairly common practice, uh, to allow those types of businesses and activities. So you can expect him to bring that forward for your review and consideration, uh, later this year, again, just another opportunity for economic development and. If you think about it, going to other communities, you'll see a lot of particularly breweries in industrial areas and, um, it is a good, it is a good match, uh, for that, for that type of use, so. Again, more, more to come, more to come on that. Um, and then lastly, just as it relates to your calendar. Um, really between now and the end of the month, March twenty-sixth, um, if you're interested, community healthcare is having their annual lunch and laughter. Um, fundraising event at the Hotel Murano at the bicentennial pavilion, and, uh, that's at the, during a lunch hour. Um, that same evening, we'll, uh, the, the Mayor Whalen will be having his mayor's coffee house at the Fort Stillicum Park Pavilion. And the, um, the, um, item will be West Pierce Emergency Management Coalition. And basically what we do in the event of emergency management, and that's a coalition that's comprised of. West Pierce Fire and Rescue District, the city of, of Lakewood, the city of University Place and the, and the town of Stillicum, so we'll have a couple of those staff there that will be able to. Talk about that. On April twelfth, a couple of things happening on April twelfth, um, the first is the youth empowerment summer, summit at Harrison Prep. Um, that's from eleven AM to three PM, also on April twelfth and the thirteenth, from eight AM to two PM, we'll be having our spring community cleanup in partnership with. Waste Connections over at their transfer station. On April sixteenth, the following week, um, in the morning, um, between eight thirty and ten AM, communities and schools will be having. Their annual fundraising and community, uh, breakfast, and again, it'll be at the, at the McGavick Center. Um, on the eighteenth, um, in the evening from five to nine PM, we'll have the annual cops versus, uh, teachers basketball game over at Lakes High School fundraising event. Um, and on April twenty-fourth, uh, right here in the city council chambers. Lakeview Light and Power will be having their annual meeting at, at, at six PM, and somewhere in there, Lakewood, I'm sorry, the Lakes High School has their annual. Um, art presentation from their students, that's over at St. Clair Hospital, so, uh, we have yet, uh, look, look for a save the date on that here in the. In the, in the near future, uh, we are anticipating that they will be doing it again this, this year. And then to close out the month of April, on, uh, April twenty-sixth on Saturday from nine to noon is, um, Parks Appreciation Day, which will be held. Throughout various, um, city parts. Um, and then lastly, uh, the city clerk, uh, she did hand me here a proclamation for troop fifty-three. Um, recognizing the Voice Council of America and, uh, uh, Mayor Whalen, this is on, their event is on Saturday, so we have it here for you or Councilmember Lorisella. So I, I have it, so make sure we get it into your hands before we leave this evening, so, with that, that's my report.
I'm sure Tristan was Eagle Scout, not me. Yeah. Uh, quick update, Mr. Caulfield, on the April twelfth series of events, one thing we need to add to the calendar is the Lakewood Rotary. Annual Wine Fest event and beer bet that night.
Yeah, I know, I, I, what I usually don't call it, because there's so many service clubs, but yeah, you're absolutely right, uh, Lakewood Rotary Club is having their annual fundraising event at the. McGavick Center as well.
Maybe just push that out too on the counter like all the others. Thank you for that, any questions of Mr. Caulfield? That's a, a busy day, but it should be a full day, so, sure.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, uh, and thanks, uh, Mr. Caulfield, just a quick follow-up from when, uh, Lakewood PD was presenting earlier. Uh, it'd be great if we could get a follow-up on the, um, closing the loop with the courts and the stats on. Uh, if our arrests are up and our crime is down, are we seeing, um, the prosecuting office proceed with higher convictions as well?
So, Councilmember Lorisella, so we can follow up with the prosecuting attorney's office, which is in the legal department, perhaps schedule a time, because that's, that's separate and distinct from. The police department, but, um, um, we'll see if we can do that sometime later this spring or summer.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Caulfield. So, I will turn to council comments, but before I turn away from Mr. Caulfield's comment, I want to focus on his Korean. Invite that came from the city Gimhee, uh, letter came to me, uh, but it's certainly open to all of you, so I want to just. For just a moment before we turn to individual comments, just see if there's interest of any members here who would like to go. Who may have the time to go, again, it's, it looks like it's April roughly the tenth through. The thirteenth, which means it could be a flight late on the ninth, but likely still coming home on the twelfth or thirteenth, rather, which is Sunday. So. Any thoughts, anyone here, you want to probably think about, just let me know.
So just remember that the flight leaves on Thursday, it leaves around eleven thirty or noon.
Oh, would, okay.
Yeah, that's already the flight to, yeah, and to, and so it's a direct flight to Korea.
Okay.
Via Delta slash Korean Airlines and then a hop to Gimhee, which is about another hour or so.
Right. So I may or may not, uh, be able to go because I'm supposed to be doing something for the Rotary event on the twelfth, unless I can get someone to take my place. Uh, I'd like to go, but I don't need to go. Mr. Brandstetter.
That's, that's a timeframe when I'm not able to go, I have other things going on, but did I understand that the, the invitation was. Also, if there was, uh, uh, a, a, an entertainer or entertaining group?
Uh, that, that is correct, Councilmember Brandstetter, they, they framed it as a performance troupe, um, I, I would, I would think they're envisioning maybe some. You know, some kids or high school students or something along those lines, that's kind of how we're interpreting it.
Mr. Caulfield, I didn't have.
Because it seemed if they were going to entertain, that, that, that they may need to be in a slightly different tribal, travel timeline if they have to get there to. Integrate themselves into an event, I, I don't know, but, um, you, you know, I don't know how we would. Find that, would the Arts Commission be looking for someone or would we go to the school district, uh? Or that, that, that's, that's a really hard piece on short notice.
Very, yeah. Very for us to feel comfortable putting that kind of resources into it. It'd be very challenging, I would think. Again, Mr. Caulfield and I, we're gonna, you know, prepare to do an act, but we just, we couldn't get it together in time. He didn't sing as well as he wanted to either, so.
Oh, that's comedy, sorry, Mayor, my bad, I'm just catching on, I'm a little slow this evening, my bad, I apologize. You know, the other thing on a serious note is, um, I don't know if the city would be actually able to pay for their travel as well, so, um, I mean, we could look into that. Um, but, um, yeah, I, I don't know who we would, yeah, that we. Yeah.
So we'll, we'll come back to you on that, folks will reach out to either one or both of us and we'll see if we can get.
And, and what we'll do in the meantime is we'll, you know, Bryn Grimley, our communications manager, she has an open channel, you, you'll remember June, and, um. So she'll reach out to June and kind of find out what's going on and, and also kind of the timeliness of this, it's, because personally, I'd love to go myself.
It's just really.
But it's, yeah, because there, it's, it's such, it's, it's such a great group over there and.
They're wonderful folks, i- if Bryn is reaching out, she might try to reach out again to the folks in the Philippines, because we haven't visited that group in a couple of years.
So, yeah, we are actually waiting to hear back from them.
Oh, we are, okay.
As well as, and, um, actually, um. Um, um, Connie from, um, the Sisters Cities Association has that contact.
Okay, very good, well, I just wanted to get that, uh, out front there, so let's turn to council comments, how about Mr. Boki, start here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a couple of things, I think I'm supposed to be at the Tillican Woodbrook meeting tomorrow, I won't be able to make it, so. If someone could. Cover for me, that would be wonderful, I would appreciate that.
Tillican Woodbrook tomorrow is probably six o'clock.
Six thirty, six thirty.
Six thirty. The, the community's in. Okay, thank you, Ryan. Um, attended an event, uh, with the mayor on Friday night, and he'll tell you a lot more about it, he did a great job of representing the city of Lakewood. Um, we also had, uh. Maria Tobin from SSMCP there, and, um. A great event, and the mayor could tell you more, and I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Brandstetter, we'll go down to the other end of the room here.
Well, I guess as, as mentioned earlier this evening, I did attend the. Um. Kickoff of the Pierce County initiated, uh, u- unified, unified approach. To, to combating homelessness, a kickoff for which there is a, uh, uncommon bridges is the contractor who's going to facilitate. That, that work. Um, you know, uh, over the next two years, okay, where, where that is going, and it was, the event had. People from, uh, a- about eighteen municipalities, uh, that were there as well as a few other folks. Um, that, um, and have been working with the group that's been putting that together for a year now. They, it, it started with, uh, some meetings, uh, that, that primarily reflected that the, the, the current. System that has been put together by providers is been in. Consistently serving the entire county in terms of what, what folks needed to be able to go and do that. And the key takeaway, um. The event on Friday was they're looking to, uh, get Pierce County to emulate. Of processes to putting together that sort of, uh, of, of a uniform approach. That an other, some other counties around the nation, uh, have put together that have. Broken the norm of spending money and homelessness keeps increasing, um. You know, they were, there were, there, there are counties in, uh. In Tennessee, in Georgia, in, in Texas and Wisconsin that were highlighted. That particularly had double-digit, um. Reductions in, 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 in homelessness after they put together the uniform approach, and the, the uniform approach. That they, they, they are, they, they highlighted is how that works is, is the uniform approach has to really do with. Spending your money with providers that work with each other, as opposed to silos of individual. Providers that develop a plan that they want to do and, and, and just funding them. So, um, for that, that project to move forward, there is going to be a, um. A, a, a steering committee that made up primarily of elected officials, and then a, um, uh. A staff planning committee that would be made up of staff that were, that, that come from, of, uh. Across the jurisdictions, um, i- in, in, in the county, and then. Some work group task forces that will engage with other stakeholders to, to be able to go through and, and do that. Um. Significantly, at the meeting on Friday, the. Folks that presented to us weren't there. Um, that, that, there, there were some other folks that are there, and, uh, so the, the approaches, the two approaches are different. Okay, um, and, um. We have not been participating in the continuum of care besides, besides having our name into it. Um. In, in part, I, I think because, uh, they, uh. There were, there, there were some people who were at the, um. Governing role in that before the new charter, okay, and this is all the old charter, which is, which kind of led to their getting a new charter. That, um, uh, e- 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 essentially, um, were. Had a lot of hubris in them, and they were, they, they just had their own just way of wanting to do that, and that they were awarding contracts. Based on the votes of committees that included, in most cases, people who had applied for contracts. Um, so I don't, I, 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 I wish that group well to, 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 to reinvent themselves, but I'm. I, I, I think that, that our efforts in terms of providing a staff person to one of those two approaches is better to go with the one that. The council member Hitchens and, uh, executive, uh, Mello are forming up to be able to move forward and, and, and do that. Um, and that we sort of wait and see how effective the, 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 the continuum of care is able to. Reinvent themselves, to be able to go and do that. Um, I think, um. The continuum care, uh, group, the leadership group is made up of. Good people that have good credentials, but that ha- hadn't yet found a, a, a good way to work. Together and, um, and, and, and they certainly would, were not looking to work with. Um. Broadly with all the municipalities in the county, you know, they, they, they were looking at offering us a seat in Tacoma in the county. But, um, you know, I'm, I'm. Thinking that we, that we, 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 we may, we may not want to. Turn them down, but not necessarily do that, and I think in. Two, a couple, a couple of months from now, we'll see where this other project is heading, and if it's heading in a direction that, that we would like. To go, to be able to go and do that. Um, and, um, you know, one of the concerns in the county amongst all the municipalities is that there were so many silos. Uh, that, 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 cutting down on silos or the influence of silos was something that is, uh, uh, a part of the path. To really do, do, doing something effective for us, but we'd like Pierce County to be one of those counties of where. Were the exception to the rule that the total homelessness is, is declining instead of, uh, in, in, increasing. To be able to go and do that. Neither approach has, comes with any guarantees, so, um, but, but it's, uh, inconsistent to. Try to be a part of both of them, uh, my thought, uh, I'm planning to, um. Um, yeah, uh, th- th- this week, I'm, I'm planning to. Get to my first downtown neighborhood association meeting, I haven't had a chance to get to one of theirs, tho- those yet. And I know I'm not the, the, any of the thing, but I want, I want to do that, and, uh, and, and I will work to get to the Lake City. The Lake City meeting on Thursday, um, that, uh, I think we're, um. That I think we're you know, moving forward and I really appreciated the the chief's discussion and 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 in terms of him touting all the improvements that they had and and being candid about some of the challenges that he's still still working on, but I have you know, a lot of competence in the leadership of the department to set the right climate for for us to have a very effective police officers working for us.
Thank you, Councilmember Laura Sella.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Saturday, I was able to attend the LMCC Gala. Saw a number of our council members there and it was my first time and I really enjoyed it. I thought it was well well put together and shout out to our our deputy mayor. Mary did a great job of of pulling it all together and really making it impactful for our community. So appreciated that. I wanted to say congratulations to our Lakewood Police Police Department members who got awards tonight. They make our community safer and we are very grateful to them. And then I attended the Clover Park School District School Board meeting before tonight's council meeting. And there were a couple of things they first, they thanked the city for fixing the water main break quickly that happened earlier this week. And then they also had compliments for Spring Brook Park. They couple of folks had gone out there and and really appreciated how nice it is and encouraged others to go do that as well. And finally, they were also very grateful to Lakewood PD on the crime reduction stats. There was a presentation by the Clover Park High School Principal on statistics for test scores and graduation rates. And while the scores are below state average, they're seeing improvement in science and math. And their graduation rate for the high school is at ninety two point seven percent, which is considerably higher than it was when I attended. So good work there. They're doing it through a holistic approach of one academics, two family engagement, and three social and emotional learning for students. So they're doing some really good things there. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the STEM Fair last weekend and that was always fun to go see what the kids are doing and kind of being able to interact with some of the some of the they had a couple of rooms that were interactive and for for kids to go in there and play. As I mentioned, the police department was there with their drones, talking to people, getting, I think that's looking back on it, I think that's a really great you know, use of having our our cops there with some technology that that the youth are into and they're into flying drones and kind of being able to to showcase that a little bit. So I thought that was well thought out. Yeah, that was a good event. And I'll be going to Governor Mishboke's meeting tomorrow. And then I appreciate the presentations today. It's always good to see crime going down. The Roundabout Project, I am excited for it. I do just have some reservations in the back of my mind about the overall size of the Roundabout and it feels like we're kind of, you know, trying to just squeeze one in a little bit and it's really, you know, it is like the kind of focal point of the city as you're kind of coming out of the town center and it's just unfortunate that we don't have the space there to do something a little bit bigger that, you know, feels and looks and flows a little better, maybe. Kind of going out to that side of the city. So I do have some reservations about just you know, if we it would be ideal, I think, to get something a little bit. If we could stretch it out just a little bit more. I don't know if that's an option or not, but that would be that would be my only comment there. I think that the the connectivity is is going to be really nice. I like the the few benches. The flashing beacon crossing. It'll be a really amazing project once the whole loop is created and kind of like that linear park. Lots of comments for folks that are can't wait to make the full loop because now they're walking out and back or doing some alternative loop. So that'll be a great project. That's it.
Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, great comments about the Nianza Roundabout. I I agree with it would be nice if the Roundabout could be a little bit more substantial and it's a more of a gateway. Just a statement piece of something that when people are coming in, but I am really excited about the sidewalk that'll be going all the way around it. I think that'll be really exciting and possible, you know, the bench is an impossible little linear area park for people to enjoy and the connectivity of it. So I think that that I'm really excited about that. I'm also wanted to say thank you to the chief and the rest of the police department that were here tonight. Great report on public safety and also really just commending the people that have done a really great job. And lastly, just about the neighborhood groups, I think it's really exciting. We had our little sign up sheet go around and there's quite a few of them on there. So I think that that's just a really great step forward is creating these neighborhood areas and able to better hear from our residents. So I'm looking forward to those two. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Great presentations tonight by the chief and certainly our capital projects managers JB and Troy on the the program management for Nianza Road. We asked for it, we received it, and I think it's going to be great. Terms of events, I went to this weekend, the University of Washington event that Mr. Bokey mentioned. It was their military connected alumni dinner, their annual sort of alumni ceremony and dinner and there were probably about sixty folks there. I was asked to give kind of a keynote presentation on you know, things about career progression and such. And so I think, you know, I didn't put anybody to sleep, so I'll come. That is a success. Saturday, I went to the street end presentation by our Parks Director Dodsworth. And that was well done. She did a good job. There were probably fifteen to twenty five ish people there broke into three groups and they rotated through providing comments and feedback. And I think that that was a good way to do it. You know, certainly not going to get everyone to agree on everything, but I think they understood that the city is intent on moving forward with that pilot project for a street end and neighbors gave some good feedback on on items that they want to see and certainly stuff that they don't want to see. They don't want to see unpatrolled knucklehead activity that gets out of control. They don't want to see overflowing garbage bins, of course. And they would like to see more police presence on the lake to make sure that when the people are using the lake responsibly and safely. So it was a good good conversation. Later that evening, I attended the LMCC Gala. Again, well done. It was good to see everyone there. Tonight, I had the Pierce Transit Commission meeting before tonight's meeting, so Pierce Transit is grappling with what potential impacts may be fall the agency based on federal money cuts as well as state cuts flowing from federal money. So more to follow on how that may impact transit in our region. So that was it for the weekend. We do need to chat a little bit about the city manager recruitment process. Mr. Caulfield and I, Mr. Vargas met briefly with the consultants at the council by resolution retained last week. The first step this next week and a half is for the main consultant, Ms. Terry, to meet with us as either groups of three or individually. And so I told her I would get your preference tonight if you were okay meeting in a group of three, kind of like the subcommittee did. Or whether you'd like to have her chat with you for your thirty minutes individually. So you want to let Mr. Caulfield and I know that your preference, then Mr. Vargas will schedule those this week, preferably toward the end of this week, first part of next week. And then we'll kick off the process. We communicated the key stakeholders that we talked about the last time that she will try to coordinate and connect with, which would be like Ron Banner for the school district, Linda Smith for the chamber, a member of the military out at JBLM that would represent the base, Citizen Advisory Board Commission Chairs, preferably. What else, Mr. Caulfield, did we talk about?
The only one I could think of is the fire chief. Did you mention the fire chief?
That's right. Yep. And of course, the department directors and senior executive staff members here at the city. So those are all sort of groups of people. So if you want to either email Mr. Caulfield your preference on a date and time or whether you're okay with doing a threesome or twosome, or if you want to be your lonesome.
And evenings work as well.
Correct. It can be either or both. She, I mean, it's to get us flowing on this timeline as expeditiously as possible. I think it's going to be easier to do Zoom meetings, but she's more than happy if she can make use of her time to come and meet people individually here if you'd like to do that. We just need to coordinate time. Yeah. Just let Mr. Caulfield know your preference and CC me on that. So I kind of know a little bit. Anything else, Mr. Mr. Pearson?
I'm I'm fine with a Zoom meeting if there's like three of us that would prefer a Zoom or three in the office, then
Yeah, okay.
That way.
Either way, I'm whatever. I'm open to both.
Okay, Mr. You're okay. Okay, Mr. Brandstetter?
If there were like three of us, how long would such a meeting?
Forty-five minutes.
And if we were to do it separately?
Half of that, maybe thirty minutes. I mean, it, she's flexible. She wants to maximize your input and leverage her time as best we can because we're kind of under, you know, I don't want to say a short leash, but we're trying to shoot for we're trying to shoot for the culmination of the feedback so that they can round out the profile. Bring that back to us so we can bless what the profile that we've articulated is the one that we want to project for recruitment. And then after she puts that application out there, they will receive, you know, the applicants. They will do the first sort of cutting of those. Do the some sort of interviews and then reduce those down to a manageable stack that we will then start interview processes with. We'll get the full list of those that did apply and any rationale as to why they didn't make their cut. If there's somebody on the list that didn't make the consultant's cut, but we still want to interview, we can do that. We can add them back to the list. So it's somewhat flexible. If you're looking at the sort of end game from a backwards planning standpoint, we're looking to try to make a decision on a candidate, perhaps the evening of Monday, June sixteenth, which means that either the week of the tenth or third of June, we would have the community engagement event like we had with Mr. Caulfield twelve years ago. That would be something at McGavick Center where the community would be invited. The candidates, if we culled them down to three or four, would be invited to come and make presentations briefly, introduce themselves, talk about the three, you know, priorities that that we articulated that, you know, how they might address those. We'll come up with the questions, but we're just backwards planning that that might be the timeframe, either Tuesday, June third for that event or June tenth, followed by some community panels of interviews the following day or two and then giving council sufficient time to to chat and then come to a decision on a selected applicant. So that's kind of the timeframe. I miss anything, Mr. Caulfield, on that? Okay, great. So it sounds like we've got pretty clear direction. Yeah, Mr. Vargas just to start coordinating. So that'll be good. Okay. Well, thank you for your your attendance tonight and attention and to staff for all your good presentations. We appreciate it. We're adjourned.